Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, January 9th, a little after 7:00 PM. And this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. And we will also have two public hearings tonight. Before we begin, I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of Joseph Conway Jr. A few days before Christmas, Mr. Conway, who is the brother of our town moderator, Claire Smith, passed away. And he was a member of this school committee back in the 1970s and early 1980s. So just a couple of moments to remember Joe Conway Jr., please. Thank you. We'll begin tonight with two public hearings. The first hearing will relate to the proposed change in the grade configuration for the middle school on the two elementary schools. The second public hearing will relate to the level of school bus transportation services to be provided. Just so you know, we will not be voting on these two issues or the budget this evening. The budget vote, as well as the vote related to these two issues, will be on the 30th. And you are all encouraged to come back on the 16th, a week from tonight, for the full budget hearing. So that I ask if you have a general budget question that you hold off until next week, unless you cannot hold yourself and you won't be able to attend, and then we'll try to accommodate you. But next week is the full budget hearing. And that will also include members of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator as well. We will also not be having public participation tonight. So if you have a comment or a question that is unrelated to these hearings and feel compelled to ask them, feel free to do so. But I cannot promise your response to your comment or question that is unrelated to transportation or grade configuration. That will be the emphasis for tonight's two public hearings. We will start with grade configuration, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Rubenovich.
Thank you very much, Chairman Swett. I'd like to welcome people here this evening. We have some information to share. Our two elementary principals will start this evening talking about the need, the overcrowding that exists at both elementary schools. The middle school principal, Mr. Gilmore, is here and will address the fact that there is space at the middle school. He will also talk about the configuration, the way it would look, where the fifth grade would be located, what kind of time we're looking at. And then, Mr. Gilmore and our curriculum director, Mrs. Rotella, will try to answer some of your questions. Actually, three of us, Mrs. Rotella, myself, and Mr. Gilmore, since we are all either current or previous middle school principals. And both Mrs. Rotella and Mr. Gilmore have been principals of schools that had a five through eight configuration. So they will be able to answer some of your questions. And as we go through after that presentation, we're going to ask you to, we'll bring the mic down, and we'll ask you to come up and to give us your thoughts, questions, and we'll try to answer them the best we can. And whatever answers we don't have tonight, we will bring back at another time, either at the next, probably at the 30th, evening of the 30th. I would hope we put this back on the agenda. And we can answer anything we're not able to answer this evening for the committee. So at this point, I'd like to introduce our two elementary principals, Mrs. Siemens and Mrs. Panarese. Ladies?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. So we have a couple of slides that we're going to go through to give you some information. So what prompts the proposal to move grade five from the elementary schools to the Wareham Middle School? And there's basically one answer to that. It's the overcrowding that exists at both the Deacon School and the Minot Forest School. So we have a couple of slides. I'll begin by going through the Minot Forest School. As you can see on this chart, and as we're going through our budget preparations for next year, I have high class sizes at Minot Forest right now. I have a grade five that has 27, 28 students in it. Grade three has 27 students in it. We have to plan now for next year. I was requesting three teachers to try to help with the class size. The chart that you see on the left factors in three teachers. And that would help bring the average class size, you can see in the right-hand column, anywhere between 20 to 25, depending on the grade level. I lost four teaching positions last year. So in some grade levels, if I had six teachers, this year I only had four in that particular grade level. As I plan for next year and projections, I have to consider that and think about that. The chart on the right-hand side, if I didn't have any additional teachers, what that would look like? So for instance, grade one, if we have the current four classes that we have this year with 119 students, that's straight numbers from kindergarten, I'd be looking at 30 students in a class. That is not acceptable. And if I go up by one classroom, five classes, I'm at 23 to 24 students. I could take that one position from a grade two class, which is going to bring them to 22, 23 for next year. For grade three, there are 111 students. I have five classes now that I'd like to keep that would give me 22 to 23 students. If I go down to four classes, they're going to have a range of 27 to 28 students. That's very high for third grade and also for an MCAS grade. Why would I go down by one class? Because I would need to put that position into grade five. Currently, grade, I mean, sorry, grade four. Grade four only has four classes this year. They have 130 students for next year. That's my bubble class. That's the class that has the highest number of students. I have to add a teacher to grade four next year, and that is keeping them at 26. That's still pretty high for grade four. So if I take one away from grade three to put into grade four, I now have grade three at 27, 28, grade four at 26. I can keep the four classes at grade five, which would give us an average of 24, 25. So in order to help with these class size numbers, we need to add teachers to Minot Forest. But I don't have any space at Minot Forest to do that. We don't have any classroom space because it's all utilized. In order to add teachers, we would have to move the grade five out of Minot into the middle school. In addition to the overcrowding with the lack of space, I have three specialists who are on a cart. The study skills teacher is on a cart, the music teacher is on a cart, and art is on a cart. They are trying to push their carts through the hallway upstairs, and they use the one elevator that we have to try to get downstairs. And they're trying to do that on time. Once in a while, they can squeeze two carts in the elevator if they're there at the same time. And when it's lunchtime and the grade five students are trying to get to lunch, it's really chaotic, and it's very difficult for them to push the carts through the hallway to get to where they need to be. I have two gymnasiums at Minot. I had to take away the use of one for phys ed this year because when the kindergarten came over from Hammond, we made, we reconfigured the building to be K-5. But I had to take my reading specialist out of the library. They are now in one of the gymnasiums. So the reading interventionist has six people in that gymnasium sharing that one space and working with students. And you'll see a picture of what that looks like. I then had to use the library to put three special education teachers in there. So three teachers are kind of cramped in that library space, working in small groups with their children. You'll see a picture of one of the classrooms that has about 27 students in it. This makes it difficult for the teachers to have learning centers or various centers to help with instruction because there's no space to move in the classrooms. We have the portable classrooms at Minot that are over 20 years old. That's where all my grade ones are housed right now, and we have to keep repairing them. When we had Hurricane Sandy, we had a lot more leaks in the roof that we didn't have This is a picture of the gymnasium where we have the reading interventionists. Again, as I said, there's six people trying to share this one space. They try to create a little community inside there, and the teachers have done a wonderful job trying to do that. But they're using, as you can see, bookcases and easels and carts to try to separate and section off their area that they can work. Now the view from, you can see different tables, and that's where the students would come in and work. And this is all part of our response to intervention that we're doing with the students. If they need extra time for their reading, they come down and they work with the reading We also have computers. It took about two months to finally get them up online, but at least the students can use the computers to work with Lexia, which is one of the reading programs we can use with them. And as you walk into the first door at the gymnasium, this is what it looks like. Again, the teachers did a nice job trying to make it look organized and comfy, but it's quite cramped in there. Because art is on the cart, we only have this one small office area where the art teacher can use to store her space. When we lost the music room that we had last year to this year, the music teacher was in there as well, but they just couldn't function at the same time. There was just not enough space in there. So the music teacher took a corner of the stage at Minot, and that's where she has her office. And the stage is also used during lunchtime. So we have lunch tables with about three or four where the students are eating. It's used every day for chorus and after-school programming for care. This is a sample of our grade three classroom. There's 25 to 27 desks in here, and the teachers are trying to use furniture, again, to section it off. There really isn't a great configuration to put all the desks together. We are always worried about making sure the doors are unblocked for fire exits. We have to watch what we're putting in on the walls. We always are careful with that. But it limits what the teachers can do for centers, as I had previously mentioned. So if you want to have children working on a math center or a literacy center, there's no room in the classrooms to put an extra table for a small group of students to do that. So because we want to add the teachers, because we're already cramp us based, to lower those class sizes to get away from the 27s and the 28s, I have to be able to add staff. And I can't add staff unless I have the classroom space in the building. And the only way to do that is to have the grade five go to the middle school.
Mrs. Panarese?
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening. We also have overcrowding at Deacon, but it takes on a little bit of a different flavor here. This is our bus lobby, and it looks quite spacious. But these are actual learning environments for students, which is not the most ideal. So students that need some extra help or are part of the RTI process, which all of our students in our school are part of, would have a small group in this area. And again, it's not ideal. It's distractible, and I applaud my staff with doing the best that they can. But because we're trying to meet so many children's different needs, whether they be very, very high or in need of support, we have run out of areas. So this is one area where I explained before that it kind of is almost commonplace. We just got used to having learning areas be here in our building. We use the bus lobby, and the school library is also used for a classroom because it's study skills, and we're trying to really focus in on helping students access the curriculum and be remediated in some skills. So we do utilize the library for books as well as for study skills. And we have not had that empty in a couple of years because we've seen an increase in enrollment. The storage area between the cafeteria, and I will show you a picture of that as well. Can we flip to that one? And one more. You're going to have to go back. This is a storage area, I think, between the cafeteria and the gym. I think that it was meant to be a storage area, but it makes for a small, quiet, learning space if lunch is not in session. So this is another area where intervention is taking place. And again, it looks like a nice, small, little learning space, but it isn't. It's not ideal, and it's not appropriate for children. If you can go back one, two. The small gym right now, we each have a small gym, is used for music, and everything is set up there for music. So I don't have the music person on a cart, and I don't have the music person on the stage. However, what I do have is the art teacher who does not have the accessible facilities that she needs with a sink, hot water, and cold water to be able to rinse things out. Also, with the new Common Core, what we're facing here is it's very difficult for these teachers to integrate and to use some cross-discipline instruction and planning because they're not in the teacher's space. They're off in another hallway, as you're going to see in a couple of slides. So they don't really have access to the teachers, other than to go in, do the lesson, and come back out. And what that also does is we can't do long-term projects. If you have a room for that, when you have specialists come in, they can integrate and do long-term projects. The students leave their materials there, and they come back the next week, and they're able to continue their work. So it does take away from the learning piece and extending that learning that goes on in the regular education classroom into the specialist classroom. This is an area where we have our special education teachers and interventionists. There are five teachers that share this one room. And again, we're kind of used to doing this. We've been doing this since, at least since I've been there, and we have had to make the best with the space that we have. One of the other things that we need to consider at Deacon is that the portables are smaller classrooms than the regular classrooms. They do not have sinks, and they're also smaller in actual size. So there's less flexibility in those portables. And grade two right now is housed in the portables. They are decaying, and we do have some repairs that are constantly being made to them. But though second grade really needs to be in the main part of the building, using a functional classroom so that they can have the same type of learning opportunities as students in other grades. This is where the art teacher does her planning, and she uses a custodial sink to rinse out her materials. And again, that's between there.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Gilmore to please come to, and Mrs. Rotella. And while they're getting seated, if you look up at the screen or if you have the presentation, these are all the local areas around that have five through eight middle schools. I won't bother reading them to you. You can see them right around us. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Good evening. Wareham Middle School. Students know three words: caring, cooperative, and respectful, which is the guidelines by which we operate. And so with the fifth grade, the proposal for the fifth grade to come here, we wanted to take a look at the school. And what it would mean for us is, yes, we have the room. And B, what it would mean is that we would have to reconfigure the building so that we could keep the fifth and sixth grade in one area and the seventh and eighth grade in the other area. And basically, if you walked into the lobby of the building, for those of you who have the children who have been here or are here now, if you walk into the lobby, the fifth and sixth grade would be to the right. And I have some slides to, oh, I'm going back. There we go. Okay. First of all, the population at the school would be 874 students. That's the breakdown by grade. Again, that's for next year, all right? 210 fifth graders, present fourth graders coming here. So this is the first floor of the building. The fifth grade, you can see, is all contained in one area, and that's the orangish area that you would see on the presentation. And then we would have the sixth grade, just as you walk in the lobby, the sixth grade classrooms would be there, and some would be at the end of that fifth grade wing. What it means is that all of the fifth grade would be down here for their music, their art, and those kinds of things as well. And the five and six would be this way. The blue is the seventh, excuse me, blue is the eighth grade, okay? And they take, right where the library is, that's where they are, okay? So basically, we separated the building into two pieces. Fifth and sixth grade on one side of the building, seventh grade, eighth grade here, and seven and eight on the second floor of the building. And here's the second floor. You can see the blue. One of the things we have worked at is to make sure that the eighth graders don't travel together and aren't all in the same corridor. We have that this year, and we would again have that next year. And then the kind of grayish color is all of the seventh grade classrooms so that there's really no interaction between seven and eight and five and six as far as bathroom usage or any place that they would be passing in the building. The only place that might be is if a student was sick and they had to come down to the nurse's office. The nurses' --
I mean, it's that.
Okay. How do I get back to the first? No. The nurse's office is located here, so that would be the only occasion that they would have any sense of either doing that or coming to the office area, okay, would be for them to do that. Okay. Reconfigured into two separate parts of the building. Grade five in that distinct wing, that wing is the one that faces the high school to the right of the building as you enter. All grade five students would eat lunch. This would add our fourth lunch. Presently, all grade six eat together, all grade seven eat together, and all grade eight eat together. So grade five would join us in that same way. They would be, proposed would be in three-person teams. That would be English, Language Arts, Math, Science, and the teachers would share the common subject, which is Social Studies. The programs that are at the elementary school, we wanted to make sure that they would be continued, the special programs, and they are in place. And that's the ASD program for those kids who are on the spectrum of Asperger's, and the Adjustment Program for those who are social, emotional, and the behavioral component, and then the Learning Center for those students who need additional assistance based on their learning disability. So those programs would in fact be here. Five and six would have them down in their area of the building. Seventh and eighth grade would have the Learning Center and Adjustment Program in their area of the building. The Common Program is the ASD program for those children who are on the spectrum. That would be grades five through eight, okay, for those students who are involved in that. For the last years, the fourth grade has been involved in response to intervention. That would continue. The sixth grade was trained this year here at the middle school, and we've been trying to implement that this year after the training this past summer. So grade five would come into a building where in fact response to intervention is there. And the next note is that the intervention block that they are commonly used to, approximately 40 minutes in length, would in fact be in place for them here as well. So we would have response to intervention happening at grades five and grade six next year, and the block is built into the schedule. The curriculum continues. We have everyday math in grade six, and the students in grade five would have everyday math as well. So we have teachers that would be familiar with it, and that is the Program of Studies for Mathematics. We have the Literacy Frameworks for grade five and grade six as well. So there is a continuity in the curriculum. And we have an instructional leader full-time here at the middle school, Mrs. Kotay, who makes sure that we all stay where we need to be as far as the implementation of the curriculum is concerned. For the special ed students who require additional assistance within some type of inclusion setting and within the intervention program, we have that in ELA and Mathematics. B, when I met with the two elementary principals, we talked about what are the specials that they presently have, and we would duplicate them as well so that they would have, for their specials, music, art, and reading literacy. I think the term that is used at the elementary school at the moment is study skills. We prefer to call that reading and literacy and just give it a little bit different twist. And then also, the students would have physical education and health, and that would be two days. Bathrooms, again, only by five and six. And all the students are walked to their unified arts classes, to PE and health, to lunch, and to recess, okay? At the middle school, we don't tend to know Monday through Friday. We know days one through six. Your daughter or son coming into fifth grade will learn that routine real quickly. And so two days, when I mentioned PE and health being two days, it's two days in that six-day cycle that they would have physical education or health. Class size next year, we have 210 fifth graders coming in. We have nine teachers. The class size would be between 23 and 24, smaller than in the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. Lunch is 27 minutes, and again, all of grade five would eat by themselves. The students will have a locker where they can put their coat and any of their books or other possessions that they would like to put in there. And they are given locker breaks after a couple of classes. They go out and get the next books that they need to bring into the classroom. We have put money in the budget for the fifth grade if they come here so that we can have an orientation program. Because they come from two different elementary schools, we tried to have a special program for them in September. We do that already for grade six. We have been taking them to Camp Linden for the last couple of years. And we would do something similar to that. That would have to be designed, obviously, for the fifth grade, but something similar in nature as far as an orientation program for that, which is different than the transition program of transitioning them from fourth grade at the elementary schools to fifth grade here. For those of you who have been a fifth grade parent, and they come here in sixth grade, we go down and meet the students. They come up here for a tour. We have parent night. We do a number of those kinds of things to make sure that they are ready for the experience. And then in August, just before school begins, or in September, just before school begins, we also have an open house where they can come and they can find their exact classroom where it is so that there is no, we try and reduce as much anxiety for both the student and the parent as possible on that first day of school. So the school day for students is 7:40 in the morning, which is a little bit earlier, and it goes until 2:02. The teacher day is 7:30 to 2:45. And you'll see on the next slide why that's important to note. Obviously, the page that started us all off suggests a number of folks who have been, a number of communities in Massachusetts. Before I came to Wareham, I was in Bridgewater and was the principal of the middle school and was five through eight. Not only were we in one building at one time, we were in three buildings at one time, and we had 1,200 students. So it does work, and it can be a wonderful experience for the children. Report cards will be a letter grade, and we have Power Schools so that you can keep track of your daughter or son as far as what they are doing for their work and their assignments. One of the things I mentioned is that by the teachers being here until 2:45, we have after-school activities that the students can participate in. We have intramurals that they can participate, and most importantly, they can participate in extra help every, after, two, three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and that runs from the end of school until 2:45, and then the students can get the late bus home, okay? So we have late buses on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. We have an agenda book, much like the elementary school, so that the students can keep track of their assignments, as well as it kind of has the things they need to know about the middle school. And then obviously, we have a parent-teacher association, and right now, that's a joint one, the same officership, if you will, is at the middle school and is at the high school for continuity that way as well. And then school council, you're more than welcome to participate. The transition program, we would build, as I said, it would be something similar to what we are doing at grade six. Also, any suggestions that folks might have to make it as meaningful for the students as possible. That would be in place so that we would make sure that we, with the decision being made early, the intent was that if it is going to happen, that in fact we do an awful lot of planning to make sure that we relieve the anxiety of parents and students as they come to the middle school, a new experience for them. I think a very positive experience, but a new experience. And then one of the last things I mentioned is that this year, we initiated intervention for students who scored, who did not score proficient in the MCAS, both in English Language
Good evening. Most of you, if you've ever seen me on TV, speaking to the school committee and for all our school committee members, you see me as Curriculum and Instruction Director, often talking about assessment, test scores, new programs for our students, which we are constantly bringing into the district through grants and other means. But tonight, I'm here to share with you my first love, and that is middle school. And I want to tell you that before I ever entered into central office work, I was a middle school teacher for more than twelve years in three different states. I got to follow my husband around. And I have worked on national middle school consortiums, organizing middle schools in six different states. In addition to teaching in a middle school in a number of states for twelve or fourteen years, I was a middle school administrator for eight years. As a middle school administrator, I had the incredible privilege of building two five-through-eight middle schools. I sit here or stand here to tell you, as a parent, I have raised six children and survived middle school, so you will too. As a teacher, there is no place more exciting, and there is no place more centered on students. A well-organized middle school reaches out to students and students' needs. A five-through-eight middle school is extremely successful, and it is, begins with the teachers who care about their students, and it is reinforced by a very well-organized structure that is also enforced. In a middle school that is five-through-eight, it is very important, as Mr. Gilmore has pointed out, that the grades are isolated. It is critical that those fifth graders have teams, they have teachers they get to know, and they have a group of students smaller than their whole grade where they feel comfortable. We already have teaming at Minnetonka, where teachers, two teachers work together with a group of about fifty students. These students still see additional teachers for their specials. So, to move from a two-person to a three-person team will give them a greater focus in the content area, will allow them to have teachers who have gained an expertise in literacy, math, or science, and the Social Studies is the unifying content area where they get to integrate all of those skills as they complete various social studies projects. By having the building organized, as Mr. Gilmore has explained, the fifth graders are safe. The fifth graders get to have a bond with one another as a grade level and with one another in a team. They have teachers who understand and know their developmental needs. While a five-through-eight middle school is new for Wareham, or would be new for Wareham, it is not new. In fact, they've been around since the seventies, and they have, in fact, increased since 2002. They've increased for a number of reasons. One, which is not of least importance, is the children are maturing more quickly. Puberty comes earlier, and the kids are ready for challenges, not only because of their physical maturity, but because of their cognitive maturity. Yet, they're still young children, and that is the beauty of a five-through-eight middle school. The fifth graders are isolated, they're kept in their own teams, and they have no need to prove that they're the oldest kids on the block, or to defend the fact that they're the youngest children in the building. So, a fifth grade in a five-eight middle school is able to meet their needs. They also have the challenge of an increasingly rigorous curriculum. That curriculum is already in place in our elementary schools, and it will continue to grow in its rigor and in the needs and the expectations for students. In this way, a teamed fifth grade in a middle school setting will have access to specialists, will have access to additional interventions and additional courses for students that either need extra help, need a little more time, or need a greater challenge. In five-through-eight schools, another reason they're growing is just for space needs, just as we're having here, and with budgets ever tightening, it is important to use the space that we have in the most efficient way possible. Schools, as we have said, are organized not only in different spaces, but with different schedules. It is critically important in a five-eight school that the students are not passing between classes at the same time, even though they're in different sections of the building. And as Mr. Gilmore has explained to you, they are, they will be isolated physically, but at the same time, those seventh and eighth graders have no reason to ever be on the fifth and sixth grade hallway. While they will need to go to lunch, they will be able to use a different hallway to access the stairs and access both the gymnasium and the cafeteria. The efficiency and effectiveness of five-eight schools has been demonstrated to improve the climate of the school, not just for those new students who are ready to grow in their academic expectations, but it actually improves the climate for the older students in the school. And I am not a psychologist, so I won't attempt to explain why, but I will tell you from experience that a five-through-eight school is much more similar to an elementary school than a six-through-eight school. There's just a different atmosphere. There is a climate that is much more attuned to students and students' needs. Additionally, at this point, with the Common Core state standards, with the demands in Massachusetts for the increasing rigor and the increasing expectations, both in reading and mathematics, having the continuity of curriculum and instruction in one building, not that we don't work to have it now, we do sometimes with a lot of meetings, but we do do that, having that in one building will allow our students to have access to that continuity and curriculum. I've included a few references for you, and I hope you have a paper copy of this. If not, we'll be sure that you get one, and this is also, this presentation has also been loaded to the district website. If you care to research any of it, and I encourage you to do so, there are some websites here, both for national organizations and research that they have done on middle-level education, on developing students, developing them socially, emotionally, and academically through these difficult years, and we know they are challenging years. There are also local organizations, and I will tell you, having been on the board of both NELMs, the New England League of Middle Schools, and COMLY, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Level, Middle-Level Educators, that these organizations are extremely responsive to parents. NELMs in particular has its own Parents Advocacy Group, and I invite you to go to their website, and I'd be happy to support you in any way or answer any questions. And I'd just like to end, as Dr. Rabinovich comes down here, that, and I'm sure any one of the three of us would reiterate this, as a middle school teacher and administrator, it is an exciting place, it's a challenging place, but it is a school designed to focus on students' needs. And I would not sit here as either an educator or a parent who has experienced a five-eight school unless I truly have seen it work and have it seen be effective for students.
Thank you, Mrs. Rotella. We don't have any more slides at this particular time. At this point, what I'd like to do is I'd first like to acknowledge that we understand that this is stressful. Those of us who enjoy our elementary schools, we feel that our children are safe, and we felt that we had another year for them to be there. So, listening to some of the concerns of some of the parents brought to us by the principals through the school councils and the PTA, one of the things we are willing to do is to put a monitor on any buses that have middle school and high school students on it. Any bus, actually, that has a fifth grader on it, we would put a monitor on. The second part of our hearings this evening is on transportation because of the cost of transportation, and increasing another load of buses would probably bring us over the brink of what the cost is. But putting on a monitor for both coming and going from the school to ensure that, just as Mr. Gilmore talked about the separation of the children in the building, we would separate them on the buses so that our fifth and sixth graders would be sitting near the front of the bus, and that our seventh and eighth graders would sit in the back of the bus, or the middle of the bus, and then our high school students. In fact, I see one of our bus drivers in the audience, and I know that many of our bus drivers already have seating plans where they do have the older children in the back of the bus and the younger children in the front of the bus where they're closer to the driver, so the drivers can hear their concerns. At this point, what I'd like to invite you to do, and believe me when I tell you, there are no unintelligent questions. Anything you have to say as far as a question or comment, we want to hear. That's why there is no vote this evening. This is planning, and it is listening to find out what the concerns are and what we need to do to make you comfortable if this should occur. So, if you come down, I'll give you the microphone so that you can speak into it and be heard by the TV audience. So, please, come on down. If not, then I'm going to hand it to the school committee to ask them to ask the questions, and perhaps I can ask afterwards. Jamie's going to come on down, okay? She'll break the ice.
Good evening. For any of you that don't know me, I'm Jamie Pelletier. I have a fourth grader at Minnetonka, and I have an eighth grader at Applegate. My first question is, are you going to keep the current house system? Is it going to be a house system of fifth and sixth and seventh, seventh and eighth? So, will you have a house master for each kind of area level, fifth and sixth, seventh and eighth?
The, sorry, for the TV. Are you all set, Jamie?
The, the way it will work for next year is that at fifth and sixth, just understand that half of the building will be new to the building next year at fifth and sixth grade level. At the, the present sixth graders will continue in the house system for seventh grade, so if they're in sixth grade Douglas, they will go to seventh grade Douglas. But fifth and sixth, there will be no such thing as a house system. In eighth grade, there isn't now. There's a blue team and a silver team, so we mix the students up after seventh grade, okay, into the eighth grade for this year. All right? So, we would continue that next year as well. As far as administration is concerned, that's a conversation that has not been held yet to talk about the evaluation and administration piece of it as far as staff is concerned.
Any other questions, please, about this possible transition? Yes, ma'am? I'm getting ready for my next career in the game show business.
Are the, is the staff from the elementary schools being moved up with the fifth-grade students?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I miss that? Sorry.
No, we didn't say yes. That's, we have, that's where the staff will come from, is from the elementary.
And what's the capacity of the middle school for our student body?
I was here when we designed and built the building, and we had nine hundred and sixty students when it was completed.
And I know lunchtime seems to be a big deal. What time is lunch, the lunch sessions going to begin for the day?
The lunch sessions will begin at ten forty-five.
One second, Howard. Sorry. Oh, okay.
The lunch sessions will begin at ten forty-five roughly and go until one o'clock. There will be four separate lunches. And we have talked about the fact that fifth grade would eat at ten forty-five, sixth grade presently eats at eleven fifteen, seventh grade eats at about quarter of twelve, and then the eighth grade is the last one around twelve twenty. We try and make sure that there is about ten minutes in between each lunch so that the cafeteria can be cleaned, the tables wiped, and the students have passed as a grade and are back in their classrooms before the next grade goes to lunch. And we have talked about that maybe what we would end up doing is taking a look at each trimester, maybe rotating a bit so that not everybody gets stuck every year at ten forty-five. The way we do it now is on a yearly basis, sixth grade has it at eleven fifteen this year, they would have it, sixth grade would have it later than the next year and later the following year.
I just view that the, the younger kids, that's a long time, ten forty-five till the end of the day.
Yeah.
And being the fifth grader is the youngest, they're rambunctious, and they're not going to have, like, recess anymore, so to speak anyways, or snack period, so that's, that's a long time.
Yes, understood.
What of the extracurricular programs are they going to?
They'll have recess. He did say, I believe, that they would have recess.
Yes, there is recess built in.
Oh, I didn't know that, sorry.
Recession, if you notice my slide, recess does not happen as an entire grade level. It happens by the team that they have of the three teachers. They will go out to recess. The thinking being that if they have PE that day, they may not need the recess.
Right.
Okay? But on the other days, they, they might need the recess, and therefore, the teachers can figure out the time that would be appropriate for that to happen. And so, it would be those teachers with those seventy students going out to recess at that particular time.
Okay. Are there any extracurricular classes that you see being cut or, like, I don't know that there's a chorus in the middle school, there isn't in the elementary?
There is no, there is no chorus at the present time, but we, we tried to entertain that, and it just didn't seem to work for us, but we did reinstitute band. And so, we would have instrumental lessons, and we would have band, and we have sectionals now. So, we would be looking at that to try and do that. It would just be trying to look at the schedule to see how that could happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
How about somebody else? Yes, ma'am, please.
So, my main concern was the buses, and you, is this?
Yes, it works on television.
So, my main concern was the busing, and you mentioned that you were going to have bus monitors or that you were going to decide to perhaps fund bus. What kind of qualifications would bus monitors have? Because already, I'm, I love the middle school. I have a sixth grader this year. I'm very happy with it and not at all worried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Not at all worried about the fifth transition. I'm worried about the busing. So, what kinds of qualifications and what kinds of training would those people have?
Currently, anybody that works in the Transportation Department has to go through, they have random drug screenings. There's physicals involved because most monitors, it's the beginning before they become a driver. But we would also, working with our paraprofessionals, come up with, for paraprofessionals, for instance, they have to have a two-year degree. So, we would start trying to have at that level. In fact, my hope is that some of our current paraprofessionals that us have the two-year degree would be the people that would actually be riding the buses. I have not proposed that to them yet. It's a negotiation kind of thing, but that's what my hope is. Because otherwise, getting somebody to work an hour, you know, from seven to eight, and somebody working, you know, two to three may not work. But if we take our current people and have them work for some overtime at both ends, hopefully, that will work.
Okay. And then, has the, has the district thought about planning for sustainability for bus monitors, or is this going to be the carrot that you dangle in front of us to get us all comfortable with it, and then it's gone next year or the year after? Is there some plan for sustainability for funding this? Because it seems like year after year, we're at a deficit.
You are correct, and that's part of the second, the second public hearing about transportation. We need sustainability. To be honest, it's not a lot of money for the monitors. So, our sustainability for the monitors, if we have them, we can keep them. It's the sustainability to get new vehicles and replace our vehicles that we need to build in, and that has to be a town-wide commitment because we're talking, you know, between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah. Another question that might be jumping ahead. You said that the budget meeting is the thirtieth. Is that going to, I'm, what I'm wondering when I'm listening to all this, is, is the budget going to change dramatically from this year to next year if we're moving staff at all of the schools, and then I'm assuming, you know, having other staff in every single building? Is that going to be another, you know, override vote and things like that, and is that something that's going to be answered coming up as well?
Let me say that I envision this move- And that has to be a town-wide commitment because we're talking, you know, between $200,000 and $400,000 a year.
Yeah, another question that might be jumping ahead. You said that the budget meeting is the 30th. Is that gonna...what I'm wondering when I'm listening to all this is, is the budget gonna change dramatically from this year to next year if we're moving staff at all of the schools and then I'm assuming, you know, having other staff in every single building? Is that gonna be another, you know, override vote and things like that? And is that something that's gonna be answered coming up as well?
Let me say that I envision this move from 5th to the middle school without costing any additional resources. The staff will be coming from the elementary schools to the middle school. So we don't need to hire anybody else to be the 5th grade teachers or the 5th grade special education teachers. So that money is in the budget. Now, if you're asking the larger question, which is in later in the presentation, about the deficit that we currently have...
And also, both teachers mentioned that with more classroom space, they could reduce classroom sizes by bringing in more teachers.
Bringing in more teachers needs extra revenue. There is only one additional teacher that I built into this budget scenario for Minnetonka Forest because of class size at either grade 2 or grade 3 to bring it down. So the current number that you will see at approximately $1,700,000 over what the town has said that they can afford at this minute only has that one additional position in it. Now, for parents that want to ensure that they get the education that they feel their children deserve, they need to be politically active, they need to come to town meeting and vote for that number. You're welcome. Okay, at this point, I think I would like to move on to the transportation discussion. I apologize, I did not give the committee a chance to ask questions. So let's ask the committee to ask questions and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the committee. Would anybody like to ask any of the presenters any questions about the proposed reconfiguration?
I have one.
Rhonda.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, hi. Could someone just elaborate on the 1 to 6 day system?
Oh, okay. So instead of a schedule running on a five-day week so that on Monday, third period, you have gym and then Wednesday, on third period, you have phys ed. On a six-day rotation, you may have it day 1 and day 4 because on day 2 and 3, you might have art and whatever ones I didn't say, 3 and 5, you may have music. So they run, you get three specials and then you can do two of them. They each meet twice during the six-day rotation. So it's a six-day rotation instead of a five-day rotation. And the high school, I believe, also runs on a six-day...Mr. Palagino was there somewhere. Four-day? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more.
Rhonda.
Also, currently at the elementary schools, there's ELA interventionists, correct?
That is correct.
No math?
There are no math interventionists at this time.
However, the 5th grade would now have both ELA and math interventionist at the middle school, correct?
I believe that is something Mr. Gilmore is requesting. So the difficult conversation that has to occur once, if this decision is made, is that I need to sit down with my elementary principals and middle school principals and work out the players to be moved.
Was it not on the slide? I thought I saw it on the slide.
He did, he had it as one of his slides that he wants. Probably should've been in his wish list rather than the definite.
It said what to expect, though.
Right. I think maybe he's lobbying hard.
Okay. Is anything else in there that's lobbied that's not really true?
That's the only thing that I didn't catch.
The intention was to continue the intervention block. So we would continue to have that 40-minute block that is presently in the elementary school in our schedule for next year. We still have to work out the details as to how that intervention will happen, but intervention will happen in some manner, shape, or form.
Okay.
What, Mr. Flaherty, maybe I can clarify for you. The elementary schools have had an intervention block for both literacy and math for a number of years. And prior to response to intervention, we had coaches. We did not have interventionists. We had coaches that worked with teachers and sometimes with students. With the response to intervention, we've been able to expand the aid and service directly to students with intervention by teachers who are trained interventionists. What has continued to happen at the elementary school and one possibility that could be looked at for the middle school is that the classroom teachers serve as interventionist in mathematics. So that during that math intervention block, the students are clustered based on need so that they may go to a different teacher for help in mathematics in the particular area or standard where they need help. So that is one way that has to be looked at. These are some of the details that are now in place in the elementary school that would have to be looked at for the middle school from both curriculum and instruction.
Okay.
And one other point is that our special needs staff, as part of their duties, are also interventionists. So those people are also available at the middle school, both for ELA and mathematics.
And they are doing that now.
Okay.
Rhonda.
I think that the other committee members might wanna, they might have questions themselves. I just wanted to make sure, this is a public hearing and I know how difficult it is to stand up, especially when all of a sudden it's announced that you're gonna be on TV. But this is, I don't really have a question, but I want to make sure that everyone here has an opportunity to not only answer or ask their questions, but also to express any concerns because ultimately, this committee has to vote on whether this is going to happen or not. And it's important that all of your voices are heard, whether it's in this forum or in an email to the school committee or contacting the administration. Please, I just, I beg of you to use this opportunity here or another way to be able to express any concerns that you have. So we're addressing those as, not only as we're making the decision, but then also if this actually happens, that we make sure that we have all of the things in place that's needed. So not only questions, but if you have any concerns, please use this time to do that.
Cliff?
Well, I have concerns. I've had concerns from the get-go. And I'm at the point now where I probably would support this initiative, but my concern is I'm not clear in my own mind, and I haven't been convinced, I might add, that we're doing this for fiscal reasons as opposed to educational reasons. And I really have a hard time making educational decisions for our young people based on the fact that we have no money. And it's just another strategy to cope with the fact that we don't have the funds to bring Hammond up to code. We don't have the funds to hire the teachers we need to bring in class, to bring down class side size. So what I'm saying is, I'm not saying it's not an unreasonable strategy. I'm not saying that it's not a sound educational move. However, I really have a problem understanding the motivation for doing this. And I can't help but understand in my own feeble mind, because I'm getting a little long in the tooth, that, you know, we're making these decisions primarily because of money and thinking about the educational process second. But I'm not saying that this is not an unsound way to do this. There are lots of 5 through 8 middle schools. What concerns me is the reason why, the reasons why we're doing it and the continued lack of financial support for Wayne Public Schools. That bothers me.
Mr. Chair? If I may answer Dr. Sylvia. This is not, we don't save anything by making this move. But what we do do...
But yeah, you do, because you're not opening up Hammond.
Well, you can't open Hammond. That door has been closed. So what we're talking about here is that we have 10 portable classrooms that are over 25 years of age. And unless somebody can come up with $500,000 to replenish them and make them whole, it's time that we stop using portable classrooms that had a shelf life of 10 years. We've gotten our money's worth out of it. So we come here because of space needs at both elementary schools, not for financial. I agree with you totally about the lack of financial support for the school system, but that doesn't have anything to do with this presentation tonight.
Well, it does have an underlying relationship. I beg to differ with my learned colleague. It does have an underlying relationship because we don't have the funds to upgrade the portables, we don't have the funds to build a building. We wanted to put, we wanted to put plans, we were on the list and we wanted to put plans to create another middle school and it got voted down. It's a money issue. And I'm not saying that we're not, I'm not saying we're taking an unsound educational step. Because I said before, there are lots of 5 through 8 middle schools. But let's put the cot behind the horse. The point is, we just don't have the money to run our system.
Okay?
Can I disagree with my teacher?
You do, you get knocked off the chair.
Will I have detention?
We believe, we believe in disagreement without being disagreeable.
I do understand the issue with finances, but I looked at this whole proposal, to me, it's a no-brainer. The key to me is class size in the elementary, you know, for our 2nd, 3rd grade. When you have 25, 26 boys and girls in those classes, it's unfair to the kids and to the teachers. We have the space. Sometimes you have to make decisions based on the finances of the town. And this town right now is struggling with police and all the other departments forced to make cuts. So I think we really have to look at the situation. When I walked into Minnetonka Forest and I thought they were having our cot and found out it was art on a cot. You have an art teacher wheeling a cot from down the halls, you know, throughout the whole school and I just could not believe that. Then I go to Deacon's School and walk through the portables and they're all crowded. You have teachers and administrators sharing desks and closets and in the custodian room. When you have the space available right now, sometimes we have to make that decision. And it's not a new concept. Mrs. Rotella talked about it, Mr. Gilmore. I apologize for being late, but I caught the tail end and did read the presentation that there are 5 through 8 middle schools, I don't know how many.
There's lots.
Excuse me. But I think with the finances that we're in, I can't speak for all the parents. My daughter's a senior and my son has graduated. But in this position, working with young kids and things, I think it's important that we've got to focus on the early, early ages. And the only way to do that right now is I support this move 100%.
Thank you. I see some people who perhaps would now like to ask a question and that's what we're here for, to hear your questions. So please come down.
I'm just curious, if this move were to take place, does that mean there will be no more use of these portables that are not acceptable at the school system, at the schools? And, you know, I just don't see, I don't, I hear you all saying these portables are horrible, conditions are horrible, class sizes are horrible. Does this mean that the portables will no, so now my children who are still at Minnetonka will no longer be in portables? Magic solution to the problem? I'm just curious. I'm just curious. And I do agree with the money. I think it is money.
The, at Minnetonka Forest currently, so there are four or five, do you have 5th grades? She has four 5th grades. So if they left, yes, that could say, "Don't use those portable." But you also have the art room that doesn't have room and the music room. So that's something that the principal with her counsel will have to sit down and look at the best use. Maybe they're not used every day, maybe they're used for specials rather than an everyday classroom. I'm not sure. That's something at the building level they're gonna have to decide. But we wouldn't have to. So, I mean, we had a year, I don't know if it was two years ago, we had to actually pull out the floor and put down more plywood, because that's all that those are on those trailers, are plywood. And we had to put down more plywood. So, you know, we want to make sure that they're safe. And yes, as Dr. Sylvia said, if we had a building project, then we wouldn't have to ever use portables again. But that's not where we are at this moment. I hope it will be in the future in this town, but it's not here now.
Yes, please.
I'm just kind of curious. Class size is definitely an issue. As a parent, it's an issue. Space is an issue. My children are at Minnetonka Forest, it's overcrowded, there's no doubt. I understand all, and art and music and all this is, I understand it's extremely important and they deserve the space as well. But I'm just, class size is an issue. But it's also, as a parent, it depends on who's in the classroom, the behaviors of the children in the classroom. 25 children who behave themselves are much easier, it's easy to manage them. Children who have other issues and who don't necessarily behave themselves or are unable to behave themselves in the same manner that other children are makes a difference. So it depends, class size depends on who's in the classrooms and where these, if these children, other children who may have other needs are getting the help that they may actually need and be placed in the appropriate classrooms. And that, it's just a, that's just a comment. I'm not good at this public speaking thing.
You did, you did fine. It's one of the things...
I have a question, if the portable will or will not be used...
I can't answer that question because that is a building level. In other words, if, if the budget worked and we got three more teachers to bring down class size, then she would still have to use the portables. Because there are no classrooms available at the moment. So by moving four classes out, grade 5, would give her theoretically four classrooms for three of those teachers. So I can't say to you, "They won't be used." If the budget doesn't work out and there are cuts, then I suppose, yeah, maybe we won't have to use the portables. I hope that isn't the scenario. So it's still a work in progress, I'm afraid. We don't have all the information. We don't know how many dollars the system will have after town meeting. So I really can't answer that truthfully.
Will this decision be made prior to town meeting or after the budget is solidified?
My feeling is that we need to make it as soon as possible so that we have time to plan it and make sure that we give opportunities for parents to come up here and visit and for children to come up and so forth. It is very difficult waiting until after April Town Meeting to then make a decision like this when we're talking about moving a lot of people.
But this process seems a little bit ambiguous when it's a question, when the presentation is about these issues and then we ask questions about these issues and the answer is not yes or no. It's kind of...
Both ladies will come down and maybe they can answer better than I can.
My school council is used to doing Plan A and Plan B and we do this all the time. If I get the three additional teachers, then they can go into the classrooms that the 5th grade would vacate. Yes, we still need the portables. If I don't get the three extra teachers and grade 5 still moves on, the portables will still be used in some way. Whether it's the classrooms that are there now, I currently have the 1st grades there. If 5th grade moves out, I could move the 1st grade out into regular classrooms, but then I could use that space for specialists. I have three special education teachers sharing one library space. I have the reading interventionist crammed into a gym. So not only have we lost a gym for phys ed, we've lost it for the community. So we have to limit what we can now use because we only have one gymnasium. Hopefully, you know, a couple of years down the road, if we can reapply for the renovation and expansion, we can finally get rid of those portables. But they will be used in some way next year. Until we go through this process and we find out, you know, are we able to get extra teachers or not, is 5th grade moving? That's when all these decisions will be made. And through my newsletters, through the school council meetings, I'll keep parents updated as we go along. But, you know, I have some school council parents here and we're always doing, if this, this would happen, you know, and Plan B, if that doesn't go, this is what we plan for.
At Deacon's, there are six portable classrooms there. And the first thing I want to make sure everybody is aware of, these classrooms are safe. They're just small and they don't give students that are in there now all day long, because it's grade 2, the same space and opportunities as other... it's grade two, the same space and opportunities as other students are experiencing in, at Deacon's. So the idea is to use that space for secondary purposes, as Ms. Siemens had explained, either for specialists or for office spaces for adults. I also have, um, four special education teachers in one, um, room. That actually is a classroom that I could put a second grade in and then take them and maybe put two in each as opposed to putting four. So when we look at utilizing space and saying, okay, we're just going to pack away the portables, number one, the district has supported the maintenance of these, um, classrooms to be safe and to be able to keep on being functional for us. They're just not the ideal and they're just not the same learning environment as other students are receiving in different parts of the school. So this would alleviate that process. Another thing that you have to kind of understand is that, um, and I'm going to halfway agree with Dr. Sylvia, and, cause I too don't want to disagree with my teacher. Um, but I do agree a piece of what Dr. Sylvia's saying, but the other half of that is, is that smaller elementary schools provide a, a, a better learning environment. It's that the research shows that. It's not my opinion nor Ms. Siemens' opinion. So right now, when we're looking at our schools and we're looking at almost 700 children per school, that's an enormous amount of elementary students at one site.
I agree with that.
And so when you look at, thank you, when you look at the individualized and really getting to know students and having students really being vested, and parents as well, being invested inside a smaller school, I think it's a, just a better environment for everybody, for the community, for the parents and for the students. We do need to downsize our elementary schools. They're quite large. And this, again, is like a two for. It's more, I don't want to see my fifth grade go or my fifth grade teachers. We all love them, we love our school. But faced with a better opportunity for the fifth grade, a better opportunity for the students that are at Deacon's, I, I agree, um, it's really a no-brainer, um, but.
Will this move reduce class size at all?
Not, well, at Deacon's, we're going to have the class size we have because I did not ask for any additional personnel. I do have five teachers at every grade level in my class sizes to be anywhere between 23 to 26 and 27. Um, and we can always plan for the right amount of class size, but as the year goes on, we do have a lot of transient population. And this particular break in January, we probably saw an influx of anywhere between 10 and 11 students at Deacon's. So when you add that on to your class sizes, the numbers begin to jump.
And just one, I'm sorry, so just one comment to that, that, uh, what, when we talk about class sizes, right, I mean, being able to reduce class size is something that we all want to do, but that's, that's not what this move is all about. It's trying to prevent increased class sizes going forward. And that's what will happen. Um, and so that's the only reason why I'm considering this also, that if you take a look at next year and you have the threat of having a 28, 29, you know, 30 person, which is completely unacceptable, um, class size, that's the reason why. So I know that I, as a parent, I have a first grader at Minnet in a portable. So if they're not safe, then I'm the first one screaming about it. They are safe. But it's more about, um, really trying to, trying to help what we know inevitably is going to happen, which is continuing to increase class sizes.
Is this also set in place for the eighth grade and the eighth grade's space issues?
At this particular, uh, point, that is not on the agenda because the high school has told us.
If the eighth grade comes in, are we talking a year from now?
It, it depends on if there is room and if that is thought at the time to be the best educational decision. So it will be the same kind of thing. Um, I don't, right now, there is no space at the high school, um, for the eighth grade.
Dr. Rabinevich, when this building first reopened after the reconstruction, and I taught here at that particular time, I'm going to say we were upwards of 11, 1100?
No, 960, I believe, was the largest enrollment at the school.
Six something now?
Yes, that is correct.
Excuse me, everybody. Excuse me, everybody. We have to consider the television audience. So if you want to answer a question from someone who didn't have a microphone, I'm, I would ask you that you repeat the question and then give the answer.
All right. So the question had to do with whether or not we were planning on moving the eighth grade to the high school. My answer was no, uh, because there was no room at the high school. The 960 students that I referenced, that was for this building. Um, this building was constructed to hold more students than the current high school. The current high school was finished approximately 23 years ago.
You would specialize into a plenty, all of that. You get a whole row of year one.
Year one at the high school?
Yeah.
Dr. Sylvia?
I don't want anyone in the audience to get the idea that educationally I'm opposed categorically to this move, because I'm not. Uh, there are five through, there are five through eight middle schools everywhere. Uh, they're very common and for the most part, very effective. Uh, but I, I have to agree with Rhonda, and that is, again, an indirect, uh, um, an indirect cause of lack of funding, is the fact that we have run out of capacity at Deacon's and Minnet. And when you run out of capacity, you've got no room to put teachers. So the only way you can accommodate that is by putting more kids in the existing classrooms that you have. So, so even though, uh, there is no design to reduce class size, this move will, as Rhonda said, you know, um, give us some flexibility at both those elementary schools so that the class size won't continue to increase because of a lack of capacity of the building itself.
Mike?
Um, I too would agree to an extent with Dr. Sylvia and, and Dr. Rabinevich. Um, it, it is based on money. At the same time, we're not saving any money by doing this. Fact is, we've been boxed into this, you know?
That's right.
Been boxed into it and, and it didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen with just the Hammond. Um, but what if, what if we didn't close the West Wareham School and it still housed, what, four kindergarten classes?
Yes.
Maybe we'd be moving some, some of the minor kids over there, but we don't. We closed it and turned it into the academy. We had to, right? It's kick, it's the whole kick in the can down the road and it's, the roost is coming home, the chickens coming home to roost, really. So.
We have another, um, question.
Um, Marie Ferreira. I agree with Mr. Fauntz. It is a no-brainer. I have been a power professional at the middle school for 17 years. Teachers with push carts is not conducive to learning for anybody. It's not good for the teachers, it's not good for the students, and we welcome the fifth graders. But what my concern is, is with transportation, the busing. Um, the fifth graders are very safe on middle school, high school buses. As my, one of my parents will tell you, she has an elementary student, she has a middle school student, her children are safe. My concern is the crowding of the buses. Right now, most of our high school, middle school buses, if not all of them, are at capacity. We are at capacity. Six through 12th grade. Thank God, a lot of our high school students have taken driver ed and got their driver's license, because most of us would be over capacity. So my concern is, what are we going to do with these fifth graders? Where are we going to put them on these buses that are already at capacity?
A- as you're well aware, we're not allowed to, um, have the buses run with more students on them than the seats provided. And, um, when we plan the routes, just as we do now, we factor in the number of students on that vehicle. And if we need to put an extra bus in a particular neighborhood, then we'll do that. Um, currently, we have some neighborhoods where we run two buses because there are so many children at a particular bus stop. There are other, um, bus stops that you may see buses that run less than full capacity because the distance that the bus has to go to pick up in certain areas. This is a very large town. We have, uh, 54 miles of coastline and we have people that live in all areas. So, um, as we do every year, all of the data goes into our tracking and routing system and we will come out with it. Perhaps, um, during the transportation, um, part, our transportation manager might be able to give a better answer. But, um, that's what we've always done in the past. Um, when we had no, um, when parents felt that children shouldn't walk from, um, the Oak Street neighborhood and from Swift Speech to the middle school, we found room on the buses and we, we've done it without costing any more money. So, um, I believe we will be able to do this.
I will, um, just close this public hearing with some comments more than some questions, although if I generate a question, say a comment that, with which the superintendent disagrees, he'll feel free to, to tell me he does. First, I agree in many res-
Does he have a key to the microphone?
I agree in many respects, it's a no-brainer for the following reason. While this is not going to save any money, while this is not going to increase or decrease class sizes, this is really a function of, we have a building here, and I've had parents tell me this, why are all these empty classrooms in the middle school? We have a building here that is fully paid for, that is beautiful, that has lovely classrooms, and it's not being well utilized because there's literally about 100 children less than it was built for. And we have two other locations that are overcrowded. So this is more a function of, of the best utilization of the space that we have, already have. So in, in that sense, as long as we know from our educators that five through eight middle schools are not some radical idea that is putting our children at risk, if anything, it may be a positive, it seems to me that decision makes itself. On the other hand, I want to caution people leaving here tonight. None of this has anything to do with class sizes or the budget. So when Mrs. Siemens talks about three teachers, these three teachers that she would like and we would love to give her are not even in the budget that you will see later in the meeting or that will be proposed a week from today as a part of the budget hearing. So no one should assume that those three teachers are going to appear as a result of the fact that Mrs. Siemens would love to have them and we would love to give them to her. We are, as it stands now, approximately 1.8 million apart between what the town can afford and what we would like to give the school management to provide education to our students. 1.8 million. So any assumptions that you saw, whether they're on the wish list as Mrs. Siemens' three teachers, or whether they're in the budget, doesn't really make any difference. They're still vulnerable because when the dust settles and we actually have a budget that we can afford and we have made the decisions about what we, what we value and what we prioritize in this town, that then and only then will we be able to tell you what the actual budget and the allocation of resources will look like for Wareham Public Schools. So while this may be a no-brainer because it's budget neutral, there are a lot of things that are, that are far from no-brainers as we have to prioritize how we use the limited funds that we have. I hope I didn't create any more confusion with that, but I think it's critically important that you understand, many things are up in the air. We can't answer those questions until we know the, the resources we have, the financial resources that we have. But we do know the physical structures that we have. And that's really what we're talking about tonight, where to put the children to be educated and hopefully we'll get the resources that we need from town meeting in order to do that well. Unless there's a pressing need to make another comment or question, I'd like to close this public hearing on grade configuration and open the public hearing on an equally difficult subject, student transportation.
Mr. Tetro, would you kindly come down, please?
Thank you, everyone, for being here and providing your feedback.
The, um, next public hearing, which is about, um, many of you probably already know, because it's been covered in a lot of our local newspapers for quite a while, that there ha, there is currently a committee known as the Action Committee, um, which has been studying transportation services. Recently, um, I will say approximately two weeks ago, we put out a bid, um, that mentions four scenarios. One of the scenarios funds transportation at what we currently do currently now. It transports everyone that is currently transported. And the question that has been asked is, what does that cost and are we doing it for a good value by doing it ourselves, or should we be having an outside vendor do it? So I believe it's in approximately a week or two, we will be opening sealed bids that will give us prices from vendors, private vendors, uh, for what it will cost to do the four scenarios that you will see on this presentation. So, um, we wanted to explain what those four scenarios are and then open it up for people to tell us what their thoughts are about the level of transportation services that you feel are needed for your students. So at this point, I'd like to start and have, uh, Mr. Tetro take over.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start just trying to explain exactly what it is we do in the transportation department, because I'm not sure everybody completely understands, um, what we do. Um, we transport nearly 28, or a little over 2,800 students to and from school every single day. Approximately 2,600 of those are regular ed, full-size school buses, which I think it's about 80%, 85% of the student population. We transport 162 currently special needs in district students. Special needs, we range anywhere from physical disabilities with, with wheelchairs or strollers or walkers up to, um, behavioral issues. So it covers a wide gamut of, of special needs transportation. We transport 30 out-of-district students. They're required to go to specialty schools in various places. And, uh, as of today, we have, I think it was 26 homeless students. Last year, we transported 60 throughout the entire course of the school year, so that's why I put 50 down, um, because I anticipate having at least 50 by the end of the year that we transport that are considered homeless. In addition to that, we transport roughly 125 students on late buses three times per week. We transport roughly 140 students for the after-school care program. Uh, we do approximately 80 field trips for the schools or community trips, um, a year. We do 240 athletic trips, uh, for the high schools and middle schools and we company nearly, uh, 45,000 miles doing those, doing those trips. We transport daily the school-to-career program, which is out of the high school where students go to a job site for, for a couple of periods. So we bring them there and we bring them back to school. And we also do the young adult transitional program, uh, where, where students go out and learn life skills. And those are done every single day. In the summertime, we transport roughly 100 students to the summer program, uh, 210 students for the summer care program. And, uh, that, that same prog, program also does about 20 field trips throughout the same time period. Uh, we continue to bring 10 special needs in district students to the preschool over the summer. And we continue to have those 30 out-of-district special needs students who do go year-round, maybe with a week or two off here or there, but for the most part, they go, uh, 52 weeks. Dr. Rabinevich said there is currently a school bus bid out to get pricing from private companies. The bid is in a week from today at 11 o'clock. So what we're asking for are four different alternative pricing so that we can have a comparison of everything that we do compared to what we pay to what an outside vendor would, would bid to pay. Alternative number one is, uh, is level service, do exactly what we do now. Transport the students we transport now with the number of vehicles roughly that we transport now, um, with no changes in times, schedules or anything. It's exactly what we do now, which is 21, 21 bigs, uh, 14 smalls and some 7D vans. There'd be no changes whatsoever. Alternative number two, we transport only grades K through eight. Doing this, we would have to- have to switch to a three-tier system. This would allow us to cut down to 10 buses. None of these alternatives include special needs. I just want to clarify, we cannot cut special needs transportation in any way. We're required by law to transport students with special needs. So we're not talking cutting any special needs stuff here. So alternative two would be just the regular ed students. K to 8, we transport no high school students, 9 through 12 at all. And we'd have to go to a three-tier system. So we'd have the high school, middle school start at one time, Minnetonka start at one time, and Deacon start at one time. This would allow us to use the same buses in a three-tier system. We'd only need 10 to 12 buses, depending where the grades end up shifting. But we cut the fleet roughly in half with that alternative. Alternative number three, we transport only what we're required to legally transport. We transport using our current schedule, but we'd only transport kindergarten through sixth grade that live outside of two miles. So any student living within two miles of the school would receive no transportation, no students above grade seven would receive The next slide is a map of the area around the middle school. Any street, and I apologize that it's so small, but I think you get a general idea of exactly where the high school is, is a picture of a little building. Within that district, there's 186 middle school students that would no longer receive transportation with this, if we had to go to this alternative. Doing a quick look, roughly 75 fifth graders live within that same radius. So they would not have transportation. The next map is of Minnetonka Forest. There are 308 students that live within a two-mile radius of Minnetonka School that would no longer receive transportation. Next is Deacon. There's 274 students that currently live within a two-mile radius of Deacon that would no longer receive transportation. Alternative four is what's called a hybrid system. We would keep all special needs, field trips, athletics, community events in-house. We would run it on the town and the school level, but we privatize strictly for our full-size vehicles home to school. The number of vehicles, we wouldn't know yet based on whatever the decision is to what level of service we get funded for. So what does this cost the district if I were to put my own bid out? Alternative one, which is to remain at the current level we are, is $1.6 million. Alternative two is $1.2. Alternative three is roughly $1.1 million. And alternative four, just to run our sped department, is roughly $734,000. On top of that money, we'd have to pay a private vendor for our regular transportation. And without having the bids, which we'll know in a week, I don't know what that cost would be.
So at this point, we would like to hear from you about the level of service that you think we should be providing, or to ask any questions that you might have from Mr. Tetro's remarks. To repeat your question, how does this affect putting a monitor if there is no bus?
Or if it's privatized?
Privatized service, we get to write what we desire. So the monitors can exist in the privatized. But, and I believe there will be other comments, but there has been a lot of talk over the years about whether or not it is cheaper to do it in-house or to have an outside vendor. So that was the first motivation. The second motivation is that even though we currently do this at $1,400,000, there is no money left at the end to go out and to buy vehicles, because we have to use whatever we generate in a revolving account to offset a deficit. Last year, we had close to a $200,000 deficit, because we were funded at $1,350,000 in transportation. And so we had to use $200,000 from our revolving account, plus another $80,000 from a choice account, just to balance it. This year, town meeting voted an additional, I believe it was $137,000, for McKinney-Vento money to help, so that the amount of money we have to run this year is about $137,000 more than last year, which means with the revolving account, we should not have a deficit at the end. But we still have the issue of the capital question about how do we change the vehicles? How do we have a plan so that we're always changing vehicles? And that's why the whole thing about privatization has come up. And some have questioned whether or not we can afford the level of service that we currently have, and that's why we've been asked to go out to bid, and want to hear from the public what you feel should be the level of service.
Did only four, number four, go out to bid, or did?
All four went out to bid. So it's four scenarios that are in the single bid. Yes, ma'am, please come down.
Hi, my name is Holly King. This is a rough estimate, the numbers you just quoted. Approximately 800 kids from the middle school, Minnetonka, and Deacon would then become what we used to call a walker, because they're within a two-mile radius of their schools. We don't have sidewalks in many of our neighborhoods. So for me, this is a huge safety factor. And in addition, I asked this question when transportation came up once before. Has anyone contacted the before and after-school programs? Can they manage 300 extra kids at Minnetonka Forest and 307 extra kids at Deacon, when their parents have to leave for work at 6:00 in the morning and can't drive them to school? I mean, I'm very fortunate. I work overnight, I drive my children to and from school. But that's a lot of families that are not going to be able to do that in an already strained system. Have you looked into that?
Let me try to answer the first part of it. I don't think, no one on the school administration or the transportation manager believe that we should do anything less than what we currently do. We have been asked over and over again by the town to get numbers. It has taken us a year of meeting with various constituencies to agree that the bid that went out was apples to apples. We weren't asking for Cadillacs when we're currently using Ramblers to drive the children. So now that we have that, we will have actual costs, and then we will, again, have to ask town meeting to fund it appropriately. The problem is that even people of goodwill who want to are going to ask, where is the money going to come from? But it is something that is a problem for the town, that the town needs to deal with, much as we have dealt with police cars that needed to be replaced. It's a capital expense that needs to be dealt with.
I will then say this to the townspeople. We have a man out there posing as a police officer, and we're concerned with our adult women driving. We should be more concerned about our children on these buses.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Rabinovich, could I ask a point of clarification from you?
Yes, sir.
What's a Rambler?
It's someone that goes on and on and on and on like you.
So I guess you're not old enough that you had me in school.
I don't think anybody else out here is.
How about some other comments, questions about the transportation, about what you feel should happen? Yes, ma'am, please come forward so the TV camera can hear you.
My question is, if we're going with this, and our children from 7th to 12th grade are not going to have a bus, and are within two miles are walking, what's to say that we're not charging for these? We have surrounding towns that are charging their parents for those buses. Why are we not doing the same thing? We're constantly complaining that this town has no money, but our parents, you're asking the taxpayers to pay for everything in this town. Eventually, I know from my point of view, it gets to a point where I can't afford to pay for every other child that's not willing to pay for services that my child can't get, because I'm capable of paying for it. So at this point, why are we not, you know, I mean, at this point, I guess if you can't pay, then you're going to need to drive, because that's eventually what's going to end up happening. Or why are we not being asked to pay if we're within that certain amount of area?
So let me first explain, the reason that that particular scenario was there is because that's what the state law is. The state law says you don't need to provide transportation for children that are closer than two miles to school. But the pay issue, and I've studied it more than once, as you're well aware, this transportation issue keeps coming back. So we currently have 54% of our student body that is on free and reduced lunch. We cannot charge, by law, we cannot charge those families. That's number one. Number two, so if you have 50% of the population left, 25% or no less, let's call it 20%, are special needs. I can't charge parents who have special needs children, even if they are housed within the school, to bring their children to school. It's a matter of access. So right away, we take off from that 50% that's left, another 20%. So those that would be left to pay would be the small minority of people who are the working poor, who make just enough to go over that limit, and would be asked to pay for the transportation for everyone. And when we figured it out, we figured between $30,000 and $50,000 that could be brought in. That does not, that's a half of a bus. It really does not pay. And who are we asking to make that payment? Mostly people who can't afford it. So that's why we haven't to this point. Doesn't mean it can't be considered, and, you know, we're willing to listen.
My point was, we're going to these alternatives.
Can I ask you, please, to come back? I'm sorry. The alternatives are for comparison's sake.
Right. But my point being is, is if, as these alternatives state, that we're only going to go by what the law requires. So if my 7th grader is just outside of, within that two mile, my street, I live in Kermitson, I don't have sidewalks. I don't want my child walking down that street. God knows, I already see what goes on in my neighborhood, that street alone. My point is, is within two miles, he's going to walk that two miles. I'm willing to pay to put him on a bus. But my point is, is that you're saying to me, 50% can't pay. Well, then that 50% needs to get in their car and drive their child to school, or that 50% needs to have their children walk. But as a parent, I would be willing to make that payment, to put my child on that bus, to make him safe to go from point A to point B. You're already saying that that option, that alternative within alternative one, you're stopping the buses by law, you just said. I'm not talking about taking them from special needs. I'm not talking about taking them from the sixth graders. Talking about from the 7th to the 12th, or the ones that live within a two-mile radius of that school, that we're busing for free right now. That you're talking, other schools are doing it. Plymouth is doing it, and they don't have a private, they don't have a private busing company. So, I mean, I don't understand why this, you know, that's the point I was trying to make.
Plymouth does have a private bus company, first student. Mr. Tetro used to be their manager. So they do have a private vendor. The issue comes down to, can we charge? It is something the school board can definitely look at and make a decision about that. So thank you for that comment. Are there others that would like to comment? Please come down to the microphone. Well, to the microphone.
But, and I've had this conversation with you, Mr. Sweat. For 20 years, I've driven a bus, and every time it's a budget issue, it's the buses. Put them out to bid. We have, for 20 years, I've seen the same thing over and over. Seen town meeting, let's buy five new buses every so many years. Happened once, okay? Why haven't we looked into leasing buses? People lease cars all the time. They have no maintenance. After so many years, you turn it in and you get a new bus. I've never in 20 years seen any figures at all for leasing. I see going out to bid, going out to bid. Well, in 20 years, there's nobody that can outdo us. We're the cheapest way and the most cost-effective way to transport the children. Our problem is, is our buses. Our buses are old, they're falling apart, they're decaying. When your car falls apart, you go get a new one. When it gets to the point, we can only keep fixing and band-aiding those poor buses so much. So I guess as a taxpayer, I would like to see what the cost is of the repairs yearly on our school buses as opposed to leasing.
Thank you. I'm sure that that will be on our agenda for our next Action Committee meeting. Anybody else in the audience, and then we'll take from the school committee?
Before we get to the school committee, yes, please, let's make sure we've-
Any other parents, community members?
Okay, who was first? Ken?
Just a couple of things. I agree with the comments. When I drive and there are people, adults, walking on the streets because we don't have sidewalks, I'm concerned about the adults, never mind kids. So I personally would never vote for anything other than alternative one. And number two is, one of the parents made a comment about paying for the safety of their child, and if the other parents, correct me if I'm wrong, can't afford to pay, then they need to drive their kids. Well, I do believe that most of those parents that can't afford to pay probably don't even have a vehicle to drive their kids. So does it make it safe to say, I want my child to be safe, which the parent did not say, I want, I can afford to pay, but as Dr. Rabinovich said, 54% free and reduced lunch in the town, that tells me that that's an issue even paying. If we charge user fees-
Excuse me, let's be courteous to the speaker.
If we charge user fees, and these parents are struggling to pay for lunches now, they're not going to have the money to pay for user fees. And I do recall, Mr. Tetro, about a few months ago, made a comment that if there are children at the bus stop that they know didn't pay or couldn't afford to pay, they would still pick them up. They would still pick them up. So, I mean, the bottom line is, if we go with any other option other than number one, you're putting the safety of all of the children, you're putting the onus on the parents that probably don't have transportation to get the kids to the school, and nothing good is going to come out of that.
Mike? Excuse me, I'll be glad to get back to you, but I don't want to get into a rebuttal. I'd just like to hear from everybody. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I really thanked the last person that came up, and I'm really glad that we're having this forum. I say to people at this, you know, at this table, we've got three parents, two doctors, and a real numbers guy. And somehow, we've got to figure this out. And somehow, we've got to figure this out. But the last person who just came up, I mean, we came up with something so simple, but we know, nothing, it hasn't even been discussed, the whole leasing. Police department leases, they're cruisers, they got, how many new cruisers? I mean, that's something we should definitely look at. That's all I want to say.
So it has been. So let me just say that I think that we've been, so since I've been on the school committee, this is three years that we've been talking about it, and I think that we have gone through every single scenario, and we've talked about leasing and looked at the cost of leasing. What was asked here, again, I'm going to repeat what Dr. Rabinovich said, was something that we agreed to do from the action committee. We've talked about all these different scenarios, and if people haven't seen us up here, there is no scenario that, I'm not going to speak for the whole entire committee, but that I personally would vote for except for one, but then also four, if it comes in at a level that is cost-effective for this town. Because four still provides the same level of service, we're just doing it with an outside vendor. So again, I hear the outrage of some of you in the, in the audience, and it's the same outrage that you probably have heard if you watch these meetings over and over and over and over again, and it's gotten heated at this table. Because even the thought of considering option two and option three would be devastating, not only from a safety perspective, but attendance records, as well as putting an additional burden on the parents that we have here in our school district. So again, I just think that it's important to say that two and three, at least from the school board that's here right now, is not an option. But I will also say that we have to look at all of the options because it's the right thing to do. So look at it across the board. Because where we are right now, maintaining is exactly where we are maintaining, but if something catastrophic happens, then we do need to be able to have alternatives for us to be able to consider. But there are many things that are being said here today that have been considered, and if the, if the information hasn't gotten out there when it comes to costs and comparisons, then we need to do a better job of getting that information out there. But many of those things have been considered.
Cliff, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, I just had a question for Mr. Tatro. You made a comment, Mr. Tatro, on alternative two, that that could cut it back to about half the fleet. But you didn't give us a number for alternative three. Would it be still about half the fleet, or would it be more than that, alternative three?
We'd be able to cut it by about the same. We probably need a few more, obviously, because we're talking more. We're talking more students with alternative two. So we'd be able to cut, but probably we'd need a few more.
Okay. Now, I don't want to prolong the conversation. I mean, I've gone over and over again, you know, I've got transportation at nauseam, and I'm just sick of the whole issue. And right now, my mindset is, is we have two basic obligations, to educate our kids the best that we can, and to transport them safely. And I have to agree with my other colleagues, and I just can't see putting any age kids on streets with no sidewalks. I mean, if, go out there and take a look at the snowbanks, and these kids are forced to walk on the street, and that's just not an alternative that I can even support, so. But in terms of the, in terms of transportation issue, this thing is, this thing has festered since I was chair, and that was a million years ago. So let's figure out what we're going to do. If it's cheaper to put it out there, to have a private contractor do it, then I don't care, as long as the kids are transported safely, and that they provide the same level of service that we're providing right now. But I want to tell you, because I know this for a fact, they come in on the first three years, and they lowball you on an outside bid, and then you are completely at their mercy. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the bids.
I feel like I'm the reality check guy, but I guess it's a, it's a role that's, that's okay for the numbers guy to play.
Yes.
First thing, there is nothing magical about leasing. Leasing is simply a financing mechanism. You don't create money by leasing. And in fact, the police would like to have vehicles every year, and it's not on, it's not going to be on the warrant this year because they can't afford to lease any more vehicles, and they would love to do so. So it's a financing measure. It is not a way to necessarily save a lot of money. Does that mean it's not a good idea? Sure, if we had the money, we'd be happy to lease vehicles if that was the right way to finance the purchase or lease of the vehicles. Secondly, with respect to charging people to get on a bus, one of the things you should realize is, the difference between what we got as on the budget for this year and what we're requesting for next year is over $200,000. There is not the proverbial snowflake's chance in Hades that we would ever be able to collect anything close to that amount of money by simply charging people to ride the buses. So unfortunately, it's not a solution to the problem. Would it mitigate the problem a little bit? Yes. But it would also create all sorts of other problems, including the fact that some people would say they're going to pay, they don't pay, their child's at the bus stop, now you've got, now you're forcing the school into being a collection agency for parents who want the service but can't afford it, even though they're not on free and reduced. It's a mess. And on top of that, it doesn't collect enough money to solve the problem. Thirdly, and this is the hardest thing for me to say, but it has to be said, you've got a school committee, I think I can safely say, that finds anything other than one or four, depending upon what the numbers are, from the private company, anything else is unacceptable for safety reasons, congestion reasons, attendance reasons, tardiness reasons, I could go on. We don't find it educationally acceptable. So on the, on the 30th, I think, on the 30th, when we vote on this, let's assume that we vote for that 1.6 million. Everybody in this room may be quite happy because that says we want to provide that level of service that you think is needed, we think is needed, and is currently provided. If that decision is not validated on town meeting floor, then your feelings and our feelings and our vote is irrelevant. Because we will be forced to say, oh, we're only getting X dollars. Now what do we do with those X dollars? Because we can't run a deficit. We can't knowingly enter into an operation, and we can't say to Mr. Tatro, continue to provide all those services, and when the, when you run out of money, we'll just go to back-to-town meeting and say, we ran out of money, we knew we were going to run out of money, but we did it anyway. We can't do that. We have to come up with another option because that's all the town says they're willing to give us to run the transportation department. That's a cold, hard reality. So as much as we value your input, and as much as I want to communicate how we, I feel and the rest of the committee feels, if that is not valid at town meeting, then you will be looking at option two or option three. That's unfortunately, the cold, hard reality. Now, this is all assuming that the private companies don't come through with a number that we all say, wow, that's great, we think that's going to save us a lot of money. I am not sitting here believing that's going to happen. I think it's quite likely that we're providing a very efficient, high-quality service that we have come to appreciate and enjoy, and the town unfortunately, right now, is saying, we can't afford for you to continue to provide it unless we change the priorities, the distribution of the finite dollars that exist. And that happens on town meeting floor. I'd like to turn it back to the parents, but I see Dr. Sylvia has something he wants to say.
Well, I forgot to make this point, and I had it written in my notes. And this is a good opportunity to speak of this. As you all know, I've been around for a gazillion years. And when, way back in the 80s, we were at the complete mercy of the transportation companies. And so Dr. Denton, who I now think has passed away, came up with the idea in the school committee at that time to go into our own busing business. Well, think about it. We, we know, because it's gone out to bid because of various committees several times, at least since I've been on the school committee, it's gone out to bid three times. And that is building in replacement. So when we went out to bid, we built in replacing vehicles and still compared the bids that came in, and we were far less money. So think of it. Let's say it's 35 years, I don't know the exact date. Think about it. But think if we could, how much money the town has saved that could be used on cruisers, ambulances, and other townwide expenses if they could, if they've been saving between $200,000 and $500,000 a year for the last 35 years? Think about that. Think about how that money has been used in the town to take care of those things that citizens need, that had been paid for by townside spending. We have, I am positive that we have been able to save each year since the early or late 80s, at least $200,000 to $300,000 a year. Figure it out over the next, over the last 30, 35 years. You're talking about a lot of money.
Unless there are any further questions or comments, I'd like to close the hearing on transportation. But I'm more than willing to hear further comments and questions. Or you could save them for next week because next week is another opportunity because this will, transportation will clearly be a part of the budget discussion next week. So an abbreviated presentation of the budget will now be given by Dr. Rabinovich. I'm sorry. While you're getting set up, Mike, you had...
Barry, Mike just had a quick question. On the transportation, not a question, but a point that I don't want to see get lost. And Jeff touched on it, and Dr. Rabinovich touched on it. And that number that was up there, the 1.6 million dollars, that's the number that's asked for virtually every year, right?
Certainly last year, and then now again this year, yes.
Yeah, I remember Anna saying that, you know, she, this is, there's no surprise, she knows exactly what this thing costs to run every year, 1.6 million dollars, and we never get it. We're always underfunded, around 1.4 million dollars. And this past year, we had to do some finagling, you know, and bottom line, Dr. Rabinovich mentioned it, when all was said and done, we had to use $80,000 in school choice funds. And I don't want the point to get lost, I mean, we can, we can do all the right things. And at the end of the day, you know, fuel costs go up, maintenance costs go up, we could still be looking to spend above and beyond that. So $80,000 in school choice funds, that, that's, I mean, legally, we're allowed to do that, but that's money that's really intended to educate our kids, not transport them. Now, that's two teachers. Now, is that, that's something you've got to think about. I'll just leave it out there.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to, this is an abbreviated version of the budget presentation. This is contained on the web page under the school committee. If you go to today's meeting, you will find actually all three presentations that were done, including the budget presentation.
Excuse me, Dr. Rabinovich.
Yes.
This isn't a public hearing, so if you'd like to come back...
Okay. I just was getting used to my game show.
I know, that's right. What's behind door number one?
Money. Retirement. For those of you who have to leave, we greatly appreciate your being here, and I hope you come back next week. Thank you.
Mr. Fons, do you mind bringing back more water with you? Thank you.
All right. So if you want to see the longer version of this budget presentation, that had each of the building administrators and directors talk about their individual budgets, that is available at WCTV, and they will be playing it, but it is available or will be available on their website for you to be able to play it and see the entire budget.
Technical difficulties, Dr. Rabinovich, if you could just give us a minute?
Yeah. That is fine, because I'm looking for my budget sheets.
Good.
Why don't we, why don't we go to, are you all set, Jan?
I think so.
Jan, you said that he had to go online to get it.
We, we did that.
Oh, you did.
But it's in a different format, so now we need to have the page down load so that it's working.
It looks like it's working.
So we've got it working now. There you go.
Okay. The first slide after the title talks about what our mission is. The mission of the Wareham Public Schools is to educate all students for life's responsibilities, challenges, and opportunities. That's why we require the money that we require to educate our students. The FY14 dollars that we are asking for, if you look at the total, the total is net school spending, which a dollar spent in classrooms, and non-net school spending, which is the transportation number. The two numbers together equal $28,619,381. The difference between what we were funded at in FY13 is $1,882,247, or a 7% increase. The net school spending by itself, that is $1,757,478. The next slide shows where the majority of the money is spent. The red section of this is 76%, and that is direct instructional services. If we then take 11%, which is for operations and maintenance, heating them, paying for the water, and so forth, electricity, then now we're up to 87% of the budget. And if we then take the students that attend out of district for another 7%, we're now at 94% of the budget. My point is, there is not a lot of leeway in where this money is spent. District administration and leadership is only 3%, and we have 3% for student services, which include our nursing programs and special needs and so forth. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this particular slide because this goes back a number of years, but both of our elementary schools, for instance, had two assistant principals in them before. Now they have one. Yes, we have halftime instructional leaders, but those positions are only used for observation and evaluation. They are not used for the management of the building, and handling parent concerns, and discipline, and so forth. On the next slide, it shows you that we have, over the last two years, lost 24 employees who were a full-time equivalents, people who had jobs in this district who have been laid The major accounts where you will find the increases, there is something known as a function code. It's a four-digit number that the state requires us to report all of our spending into. So the first one, 2305, are classroom teachers. This next year, with adding only one additional teacher. For Minnet Forest, we have a $601,098 increase, or 4.9 increase. I will, after this slide, will go through where that money breaks down and how it is broken down. Paraprofessionals. When we became a universal full-day kindergarten program, that requires us to have at least a halftime para in each of those kindergarten classes, and we no longer can charge tuition. So we had to take the salaries of those paraprofessionals and move them into the regular budget, and that's why there's a $130,259 increase. Textbooks. You may remember the experiment of last year, going and asking for a debt exclusion, which did not pass. We zeroed our textbooks last year. Therefore, this year, we needed to make up from what we did not get last year, as well as buy additional books needed for this school year. So the increase is $355,589. And members of my budget advisory group know that that number was really $500,000, and it has already been cut. and it has already been cut because we already went and had the difficult meetings with principals, saying that instead of going for everything in the first year, let's try to phase some things in. Technology, there is a modest increase of nineteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-four The agricultural school, which is out-of-district tuition for people that want to go to a school that has a vocational program not offered at Upper Cape. We have currently, I believe, twelve students in attendance there, each at eighteen-thousand dollars a year, rounding it off. And the increase from last year's enrollment to this year's enrollment is fifty-four-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That budget item in the total budget is probably around two-hundred-thousand dollars. And it comes out of our educational expenses. And then for the out-of-district tuition, there's an increase of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars for children who have moved in to this district with IEPs that require out-of-district placement. On the next slide, you'll see how that six-hundred-thousand for teacher increase comes about. Four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars is collective bargaining. Teachers received next year a two percent increase. But that was part of a three-year deal where they got zero in the first year, one and a half the second year, and two the third year. Three and a half percent over three years. There's the forty-two-thousand in blue for the new Minnetonka Forest teacher. There are twenty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for stipends to cover monitor situations that was not in the budget. So when parents drop off children before school starts, we have staff on duty before their day. And for those programs that we need to run after school for detention and other programs, that's where that money is going. And then a loss of money in grants that supported some of these positions is worth ninety-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So the overall net school spending budget is up in total, one million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, 6.9 percent. And the increases are not increases that we can say we don't need to do them. All of the collective bargaining agreements must be on it. We have to have the paraprofessionals. We need the textbooks. We need the technology. We have to pay the tuitions at the agricultural school. We have to pay the out-of-district special education. This is the amount extra that we need to run this school system at a level service. The only difference to the level service is that one increase in teacher, but that is to keep class size at a level playing field. So any cuts to these will require us to cut into the bone and to further degrade our educational product. On the last slide, I have a comparison of general government spending over the last five or six years and the net school spending over the same time period. It shows the amount of money that the difference between each year and the percent increase. The total percent, average percent increase of the school department over those years is one percent. The total of the towns is two percent. I feel we need every dollar that we are asking for. At this point, I'm available for questions.
I'll save up for the budget presentation.
One of the things that people should keep in mind is, and I was extremely happy to see this, but the all-day presentation to the Finance Committee and some members of the Board of Selectmen, and that was open to the public, all five of the School Committee members were there. So they have actually seen a detailed version of this, which is probably the best reason why they aren't filled with questions. It's not for lack of interest, I can assure you. All settled, question? Rhonda?
Good point. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rabinovich. To repeat for probably the third time, next week will be a public hearing on this budget. There will be a much more detailed version of this presented, and we will be accompanied in this by members of the Finance Committee, members of the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Administrator. Please.
And for anyone that is watching or anyone in this audience, I ask, I'm actually going to beg, that everyone tries to get at least one other person or three other people to come to that meeting. It is very, very important that we hear from the community regarding this budget, that the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom as well as the School Committee hears comments. It's a great opportunity to be able to express thoughts and feelings about the education of the children in Wareham. So I am asking that we do as much as possible to get as many people here as possible. Thank you.
And I also want to remind people, when you see numbers like 6.9, 7 percent increase, keep in mind that's essentially a two-year increase because this year, we are literally working with less than we had the prior year. So you can really take that and divide it by two plus, and that really represents the increases that we're asking for, a 7 percent increase over two years. With that, I think I will move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news they'd like to share? Dr. Rabinovich?
I'll go into more detail about it, but the roof on the high school gymnasium has been completed. We are waiting for a 20-year guarantee, and that's basically the only thing we are waiting for before it's paid off.
That is definitely good news. I personally witnessed the stones being taken off the roof, and the timing was perfect, really, when you think about it all happening during the Christmas holidays. Any other good news that people would like to share?
Just one piece. Over the holiday break, I know one elementary school, probably both of them, had asked parents and students to create snowflakes for the new school that's being built for the kids at Sandy Hook Elementary School. I know that probably a lot of parents and students did their work over the holidays, and they, and they came prepared with these snowflakes. Because of the outpouring of support from schools all across the country, the Sandy Hook Elementary School actually had to decline district sending the snowflakes because they had, I think, enough to fill fifteen schools. So the, our schools are gonna put them up instead. But I just thought that was good news, that again, there continues to be, in our world, we sometimes seem to forget very easily when a tragedy happens, and this was, continues to be a constant reminder to put the Sandy Hook Elementary community in our thoughts and to continue to be able to do things for them. So I just thought that was good news.
Yes, Ken.
I just have one comment, actually, that I forgot. And it's to give kudos to all the principals and their presentations at the budget meeting that maybe a lot of people didn't see, but they all get it. They understand the constraints of the town, and they went in there and asked for things within reason. And they all did an excellent job, but I'll tell you, if I need somebody to fight for every penny and get me something, I'm picking Ms. Panerisi. I mean, she was outstanding, and, and that, and my point is, it's good to know that the principals are out there, they understand what the bottom line is, but the parents have to understand that they're out there working hard. And hopefully, as Rhonda has said over and over, we can't do it unless the townspeople come forward at the meeting and reach out to the School Committee, the FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, that it's time to take our school to the next level. Thank you.
Any other good news? Let's move on to the minutes of December 19th. Unless there are any corrections or additions, I'll take a motion to approve.
I have one change.
Please.
Underneath the superintendent search, in the second sentence of the first paragraph, it was agreed to have a search committee and for the chair not to be from the School Committee. Not that I want to be the chair, but I think the discussion was, somebody correct me, that it was going to be the committee once formed to decide on who the chair is. It's not that automatically, it's not the chair from, or the person from the School Committee, but it was that the committee would decide on who the chair would be.
That was my understanding. Correct.
So is, should I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
It was agreed to have a search committee and for the chair to be decided by that committee.
Now, the only thing I want to, I know we've got this problem of, of, just, just quick, I know we've got this problem of wording, of what is we calling this committee? And I think your preference is to call it a screening committee rather than a search committee?
Yes.
Do you want to reinforce that with your wording now?
Well, because this is the, the notes that were from that meeting, and we did call it a search committee, I want to leave it in these notes. But it's something that I'll bring forward as the process continues.
Okay.
There was no vote on that, so, I mean, I don't think it takes a vote, but it was our understanding that that was the intent of the committee.
That's fine. You all okay with that, Michelle? Okay. Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Gotta move it, okay.
Okay, Ken moved, Cliff seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, five, zero, zero. School Committee reports, I think we're ready for you, Rhonda. While you're setting up, I just wanted to let people know that I, a short time ago, I came from a Cape Cod Collaborative meeting, and at that meeting, there was a notice that there will be a annual legislative breakfast on February 1st, Friday, at 10:00, excuse me, 10 o'clock, at the Cape Cod Collaborative. And this year, it will focus on what they're calling regional educational issues, which specifically has to do with where general education, voc tech, and charter fit into all of this, these educational issues. And I think I would be less than candid if I didn't say that there are some people who think that it's not an even level playing field, especially when it pertains to charter schools. So it should be an interesting forum. If anybody has some time on that Friday morning, please just let the collaborative know because they're hosting it. Rhonda, you all set?
I am, thanks. Hello, School Committee members, good to see you from down here.
Rhonda, can you talk into my phone?
After our last meeting, the School Committee asked me to look at, after the vote of the School Committee, to have a search firm be part of the process when looking for a new superintendent. I was asked to continue to look at, to gather additional proposals, to look through all of those and to make a recommendation, and that's what I'm going to do tonight. But again, this is an open process, you have, you all have the proposals that, so you have all of them, so if you have comments on them, please let me know. So for the agenda, I'm just gonna go on a, do a quick overview, talk about the pool of applicants, talk about the comparison that at least I used, and then the recommendation, and then talk about next steps. So I just want to start off with, again, going off of Cliff's comment from, Dr. Sylvia's comment from last year, that Dr. Rabinovich, as our superintendent, has put children at the forefront of many of the decisions that he has made. He has fought to procure the necessary resources year after year, not only locally but also statewide, as well as, you know, is an active member of this community and a leader, and is seen as a leader in this community. So again, I just want to recognize the superintendent for his years of service. The process that I went through over the last two weeks is I solicited, in addition to the two that Chair and Swett received, I solicited four more proposals from search firms. I conducted phone interviews based on those proposals. I do have to say that I didn't speak to every single one, I think I spoke to five of the six, but it was based on the proposals that I received. I narrowed down to two based on the following criteria. Recruitment philosophy, and what I mean by that are that there are search firms that believe that their primary responsibility is really around the advertisement and the promotion of, of a, of a superintendent candidate, and then just to take from that existing pool and then present the best options. Other search firms have a philosophy where they have a pool of superintendents that are outstanding in their community, and they continue to solicit them, talk to them, recruit them, and when they find a district that they feel is right for the superintendent or the, the person, or for the district, then they, they do whatever possible to be able to connect them with that community. The second criteria that I looked at is the reach. We have outstanding local search firms, right, in our community, but then there are also national ones that I thought was important to consider, so I did look at reach. Community served, as well as pre-knowledge of the state or district. I did take that into consideration because it's a lot easier to hit the ground running when you do have someone that is at least semi-knowledgeable about our district communities like us and also Massachusetts. And then cost, but I put a little asterisk there only because cost is absolutely something that we need to look at, you know, this is not in the budget right now, but I didn't think it was appropriate to just look at cost as, as the end-all, be-all and just choose the cheapest one out there. So cost was a consideration, but I think that it's important for this committee to consider what the, what are the best services, and what is the best firm that's gonna fit with our committee and, and the goals that we're gonna set out for them. So the pool of applicants, the Center for Executive Search, the Cape Cod Collaborative, which is one of the ones that Dr., I'm sorry, Chairman Swett asked for. The next one is Echo Group, that was formerly Hazard Young, T and Associates. They are a national firm. They're based in Rosemont, Illinois, but they also have an eastern office in New Jersey. Future Management Systems, that is also a national firm. And I guess you can call all of these, they do have a national component to it, but truly that they have placed superintendents in states other than Massachusetts or even New England. So Future Management Systems is in Beverly, Mass. MASC, MASC Association of School Committees that we have worked with before, based in Boston. New England School Development Council, NESTEC, that Dr. Sylvia recommended, they're in Marble, Mass.
I didn't recommend.
I'm sorry, not recommended, proposed that we take a look at.
Right.
Thank you. And then Ray and, it's supposed to be Associates, sorry, Ray and Associates, they are also a national company based in Cedar Rapids, but they have an eastern, eastern office in New Jersey. The Echo Group is unavailable for our search, so I did take them off the list and didn't pursue them further, even though I have had several conversations with them. Echo Group does have local representation. They have a person that's on staff, staff there that works right here on the Cape. So they, that's one of the reasons why there, it was a strong consideration, but unfortunately, that individual's not available, and they're not able to submit a proposal for us at this time. They can in the fall, but not where we are right now. I just wanted to, from a community perspective, just talk about the basic search. What does it mean to have a search firm? The search firms are, when it comes to the services, they're pretty much on a high level the same across the board, even though some of them go a little bit deeper or have more resources behind some of these items. But what a search firm does for us is its general consultation around vision and timeline, really being a consultant to the School Committee through this process. They conduct the stakeholder forums and surveys to solicit input, and this... They conduct the stakeholder forums and surveys to solicit input, and this is where you do have either just the basic forums that they do, so they'll work with teachers, they'll work with administrators, they'll, they'll start gathering information, some focus groups when it comes to parents. And then you have a firm that will do several focus groups in, in a very small window, but we're, we're talking sometimes in Marlboro, I think that they did 17 different focus groups. So, it's just about the resources and then how deep we want to go when it comes to those focus groups and gathering the input and the information from community members and stakeholders. The next is they do publicity and advertisement, in some cases, active recruitment, so this is what I was talking about before. They do the initial screening of applicants, they do candidate interviews, and then general administrative oversight. What we were talking about before, in no way do they replace a search slash screening committee. The screening committee is still very much part of, of this process, because it's important to be able to have folks that will be working either directly with the superintendent or have, or are currently in the school system, to be part of a screening committee, so then they have the opportunity to weigh in on the pool of candidates. What this does do is it takes off much of the heavy lifting when it comes to publicity and which focus groups that we do, and, and it just makes the process a lot faster by having a, a search committee and, I mean, having a search firm instead of a search committee doing that. They are experts in this, they have run hundreds and hundreds of these, and they really have it down to a science, instead of pulling a group of individuals together and saying, all right, you know, this is, this is the way we should go about it, and then having a lot of debate about it. This, I think, speeds up the process. But, the screening committee, which I will propose at a later date, what the screening committee will do is still have the comments as well as input into what are the final pool candidates that are brought before the school committee. So, what I did when it came to comparison, and again, this was just the way that I went about comparing, there's probably 50 million different ways that we could compare these search firms, and I hope that once we do narrow it down to the two, that that's exactly what we do when we ask them to go live with us and interview them, that each one of you ask these, how you would compare them, that you ask specific questions around how you would like to compare them. But, what I did was I did look at location, I looked at availability, whether they have a national reach, and so I'll kind of start there, where, this is, again, just my opinion that when you look at Cape Cod Collaborative, and you look at the searches they've done, it really is around this area. It's, it's absolutely based just in Massachusetts and really just on the South Shore. So, that's the reason why I put limited there. ECRE and Ray are both, have, they're national firms, they've done, I think, ECRE and also Ray have done in, you know, probably 30% of the states across the country, that they've done superintendent searches there. So, they are very much national. ECRE, actually, was one of them, that has never done, I'm sorry, there was one other one that I didn't consider, because they, they have never done a search in Massachusetts at all. So, there was one more that I didn't ask for a proposal from. But, for Future Management Systems, MASC, NESDEC, they do have a national component, so they do have different groups and associations that they work for, so that's the reason why I just put an X, but I did put extensive with Ray and ECRE, because they do have a larger reach than the rest. I did put the base fee in there, so you can see across the board that when you look for, that, that's the reason why when you look at costs, we do have two of the groups that are under 10K and the rest of them are, are over $10,000. But, so that's one data point. And then also any extras. For the Center for, I forget the name of it, but CES, what the extras are are just really around advertising and travel. The rest are pretty consistent, that we do pay for telephone, printing and postage, advertising and travel, so we have to take that in consideration when we're looking at this, that there are going to be additional costs. When I looked at it, it's probably around $3,000 to $6,000, that is the max, that it would be additional for those pieces, and it really depends on whether we use Skype as an option to do the first round of interviews, or if we're bringing them in. And if we bring them in, then it is our cost. So, that's one, you know, one way that we can save and bring those costs down, any of those extra costs. The other data point was the searches that they have in progress, so you'll see across the board, this is the searches that these search firms are currently in process of doing, and for Ray, there were just too many to list, and so I just, instead of looking at the areas surrounding us, what I did was I looked at enrollment. So, the ones that you see underneath Ray are the ones that they are doing for school systems that are anywhere between 2,000 and 4,000 students. They are doing searches for districts that have 22, 25, 30,000 students in that district, but they also do districts of our size also. And then also the last five completed searches, I've, I've heard a couple times that what's important is, is, and I've heard this from Chairman Swett, that how long, okay, yes, you've recruited, but how long have they actually been in the position? And that's, of course, important, that you just put somebody in there, but then they're, they don't fit, and they're only there for a year or two. So, I didn't go into detail asking about the last five completed searches and how long they've been there, but that's a data point that we can look at going into the next round when we have an interview with them, and I think absolutely a question that we should ask is, you know, what is their retention rate from the candidates that they've actually recruited for that particular district? And then the last one is knowledge of district, and I really tried to get this out of them, but across the board, it was just subjective. I mean, you know, people would say, oh, you know, I think they were looking at it online while I was talking to them, others that we know that have been working us, working with us for years, maybe they were just having an off day, but they didn't have a lot of information about our district. So, again, anything that I would put in this data point is just subjective on my own, and I think it's something that we would probably do in the next round when it comes to asking them about, you know, even before they start doing the focus groups, how well do they understand our district or districts like us with the population that we serve, as well as the, all the numbers that we were talking about today, about the, the budget? So, for the recommendation to move on to the second round, I am, I am recommending that we move forward with MASC and Ray. We do have a third one, which is Future Management Systems, that have said that they are available if we do want to increase the pool to three. That would be my, my third recommendation. But, right now, what I'm recommending to the committee is MASC and Ray and Associates, mostly because I wanted to have a good comparison between local, well, MASC, who's local, who works with districts in Massachusetts around this area, has done work with us in the past, has been a big, I would say, supporter when it comes to information that we've been needing, and, and it's just a very good working relationship with MASC. So, that's one of the reasons why, as well as experience and reach and success, and also with the phone interviews, for MASC and also Ray and Associates, I spent probably over an hour with each one of them, just going through, like I said, philosophies, their background, you know, what, their knowledge of our district, all of that. And then again, I took a look at cost. And the second one that I would recommend, again, because it's more of a national, and we can benefit from just the, the large pool of resources that they have, I wanted to be able to put them in front of the committee also. So, again, based on those factors, those are the two that, that I'm recommending to the committee. So, what I'll do is I'll stop here and just see if I can answer any questions that the committee might have regarding the process, my recommendations, any disagreements, which I'm completely fine with, so I'll open it up.
That's great, and I think it's an outstanding job. I just want to ask the committee to focus on this decision of what firms we, we bring to the Saturday meeting. So, we could obviously spend a lot of time talking about this process tonight, but that would extend well beyond 10 o'clock, and we haven't even finished the meeting. And we will, in a few days, have an opportunity to talk at length about this, as well as other issues related to the search. So, if we can, at least for the moment, focus on approving or disapproving or augmenting Rhonda's recommendations, I would appreciate that. So... Questions, comments, concerns? Okay? Ken?
Excellent job, first of all, that's a, a lot of research. I, I numbered them naturally different than yours. I did, I do have MASC down because it was part of the process, they were part of the process when we chose Dr. Robinevich. My concern is, I'm looking at the area and, and the area that these organizations perform their searches for, and based on the schools and the locations, I thought that Cape Cod Collaborative was a good firm to use because of schools close to our area born, and, who else do we have here?
Barnstable, Taunton. Barnstable, Taunton, yep.
So, I would have been fine with them being part of it with MASC and, and maybe Ray, not that it matters, but that, that was my only concern is to, why we're just going with two and not three. Sometimes I think three is a good, a good feel other than just the two.
Okay.
Cliff?
And, sorry, just to respond to that.
Sure.
And I have to, when I, when I took a look at all of them, I did, might not have been the right thing, but I did look at Cape Cod Collaborative, MASC, and NESDEC, and I did put them all in the same category. And what was funny is that when you talk to a national firm, boy, do they love to talk bad about local firms. So, when you talk to a local, local firm, boy, do they like to talk how bad national firms are. And the basic difference between the two is that a national firm will say that the pool of candidates is limited because superintendents or, or people that want to apply, it's a very small network and word gets out, and so they're less likely to, unless they're very, very serious about it and, and that community actually knows that they're looking, some of the really quality candidates you might not get because they're, because we're working with a local firm, okay? So, who knows, but that's what the national firms will say. That was one of the disadvantages of going with a local. If you talk to a local, then it is all about, they work for the candidate, they don't work for you, you know, they get paid by them, they, you know, they don't know the community, they are not going to, so it, it's, and that's the reason why I thought it was important, that if we do narrow it down to two, that those really having a local, really having a national, and then just beating the you-know-what out of them, trying to get exactly which is going to be the best firm for our community. So, I just wanted to respond to that piece.
Thank you. Cliff?
You know, fine job, Rhonda, but I, I can't get too enthused about a national company, because I've seen too many superintendents coming from the outside that just don't make it, or use it as a stepping stone to somewhere else, so, you know, you have to ask someone motivation from coming from, you know, East Oveeshoo, Nebraska to wear him mask, so, I'm not excited about the terms, I'm not excited about the price, and in terms of the extras, I'll guarantee you, if he says it's three to five, it'll be five or whatever. So, I'm not excited about national firms, but, you know, I got a bias, and I'll freely admit my bias. So, I, I, it's, it doesn't matter to me, MASC and Ray is fine, but I thought that probably a better for wear him would have been MASC and NESDEC.
Thank you.
Mike, you said you were fine?
I do want to just say, you did, I told you when I saw the handout, you did a great job. Thank you very much for, for doing such a great job. I, I do have to sort of echo what Dr. Sylvia is saying, especially by going with, with MASC, well, not, not that Dr. Sylvia said this, but, but we get a whole bunch of freebies with them anyway, because we're members with them. So, if we chose someone else, it'd be, they're getting a twofer, right? So...
It's limited freebies, I mean, I did talk to them about that, and it, it is limited, but yes, there, I mean, we do get to publicize on their website. It's, it's really the reach and their, their ability to, that they have an established relationship with many of these communities, and so they're, yes, we'll be able to publicize through their website, but when it comes to, that what we really need are, are folks that have that door already open, and that they're able to have a sit-down with an individual and say, you know what, wear him is really a good fit for you, you should, you should consider this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll just, I mean, obviously, the, the fit for what, what, I think we're looking for, I think, is MASC and NESDEC. I'll defer to you on, on the, the national reach, I, I know, I know that's something you were really looking at, and if you get one local, one national, you are the chair, I'll, I'll defer to you on that.
Well, I will say during this process that all of these, when I did ask if they were available, it was about four days ago, and they weren't too happy with me, but that doesn't mean that I can't still call them up and see if there is someone available, and we, we do extend the meeting by another half an hour on Saturday to be able to get a third one in here, I'm completely open to that. Or, if we do see, another option is that if we do see these two, again, I don't want to increase the length of the process of choosing a firm, but if we, if we're interviewing these folks on Saturday and we say, it's just not there, then we can have a meeting following that and get another one or two to come in. I'm happy to do that, because I think, again, at the end of the day, this is, it's important that we find, the only reason to spend this money, the only reason, is to be able to, that they have a farther reach than anything that we can produce here on our own. We have very competent people in this town, we have competent people that probably have expressed interest and they would want to be on this, but again, it's that established network and the work that they've done that I think it's important, but, to work with a search firm, but again, it's some, we have to find the right one.
To reiterate, to reiterate, I, I think it's a great job. My, my feelings on this are the following. My, there is simply too much turnover of superintendents in at least the state of Massachusetts, and perhaps in general. Now, whether that's because school committees turn over and therefore all of a sudden you have a philosophical clash that didn't exist when they were initially hired, or any number of reasons that I don't need to speculate on, but the bottom line is, if company CEOs turned over as fast as superintendents turned over, companies would be in deep trouble. So, I start with the fact that I, I want to try and find someone who's, really wants to be here for the long term. And if that's the case, then the difference in price spread out over, I don't know, a decade, is trivial. On the other hand, if they don't have a track record of being able to recommend people who really want to be here for the long term, and we want them here after three years for the long term as well, then I haven't gotten good value for, for the dollars. So, I'm, they're, Ray, for example, is going to have to convince me that they really are giving me a lot of value for charging me twice as much, because if they are giving me a lot of value, then the twice as much doesn't matter. But if they're not, they're just, you know, fancy brochures and, and glib talking, and in the end, it doesn't make any difference, and we join the line of other Massachusetts school districts that are unhappy after three years. So, I agree with your choices, I have no problem adding the Cape Cod Collaborative. I don't think, I, I agree with you, their reach is limited, I agree with you that their resources are limited, and they don't have the free extras, so to speak, that, that MASC can offer and that we're entitled to as a result of being part of, part of MASC. So, that's all by what I am saying, I think you've done a great job, I accept the recommendations, but if the committee as a whole wants to add the collaborative and they're willing to show up on Saturday on such short notice, I think that's fine as well.
I'm not.
But, just so you know, I heard the collaborative, but I also heard NESDEC. So, NESDEC was another option.
Oh, I thought Ken said collaborative.
Kenny said collaborative, Ken, Dr. Sylvia said NESDEC.
That's true, that's true.
Yep.
So, just, we don't need to take a vote on it, how many people feel they really want to have three presentations on Saturday?
I don't really care.
You don't really care? Ken, you feel strongly about it? You'd like to have three? Mike?
I'm, I'm probably not going to be here Saturday.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So, he don't care if we have five.
So, here's the thing, if I make another point to you, this is kind of just a funny point, you know, looking at the last five schools that Ray has done, you know, they haven't done anything in Massachusetts, and they completed one in Cambridge, I guess, within the last five years. Well, I've been around, like I said, a long time, Cambridge has a, Cambridge's got a reputation for doing some pretty screwy things.
They are definitely a unique city.
They, they, they have a reputation for doing pretty screwy things.
Right, but does the city require a unique individual, or does the unique individual create the...
I don't know. I don't know. I know, just a little point of reference.
So, if...
I don't care.
So, to cut to the chase, I think Cliff doesn't care whether we have a, a third. So to cut to the chase, I think Cliff doesn't care whether we have a, a third.
I think MASC should be one of them, though.
Right.
Yeah, MASC is definitely one of them, so it's whether.
Now, are you okay with Ray as the second alternative?
I would prefer NESDEC, but I, I don't have, I don't have, I'm not going to go jump on the sword.
But, but if, I, I'm comfortable with two, but if you think the collaborative will show up for another half hour, Ken, if you'd like that.
Hold on, is the collaborative or NESDEC?
Well, yeah, I just, I just looked at the.
I don't have any faith in the collaborative.
Yeah, I just looked at this, and, you know, based on the, the extras and the searches that these organizations have conducted, with the work that Rhonda did, I'd, I'd keep MASC and Ray, but I'd have no problem adding NESDEC instead of the collaborative. I just, I would like to see a third one other than just one local and one national. I, I think, just like when you go for bid, I always think three bids is ideal.
So it sounds like there's ambivalence among most of us, but Ken would like a third. So if you can arrange for either NESDEC or the collaborative to be there on Saturday, I think that's great.
Okay, but just so you know, I probably will not be calling the collaborative because I haven't gotten a, a good sense that the committee would like that. So I will call NESDEC and see if I can get them there. But I, I'd like to, if I, if they, with a short notice can't be there, do we continue with the two, and then we follow up with, you know, I will probably ask on Saturday for another meeting if, you know, if we're just not getting that feeling, and that will pull in that third.
Hopefully, we'll be able to pick one of the two or one of the three as a result of Saturday.
But also afterwards, and not to prolong this, but we might say, you know, we still, we still want that third, we want to be able to have that comparison between the three. But I will call NESDEC tomorrow and see if they do have, if they can send somebody. Just so you know, on Saturday, MASC will be here, and their first presentation at 9:30, Ray will be doing it via Skype, because they, it was short notice to be able to get somebody down in time, but they usually do send somebody down. So, but I will call them tomorrow and see if we can get someone from NESDEC here.
Great. Anything else for Rhonda?
So just so you know, the last one is just how the community can get involved. Again, take part in the focus groups, complete a survey when prompted. We are going to be looking for members for the screening committee, it's not available now, but I probably will be asking for letters of interest for that, provide feedback to the school committee, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be a fundraiser if I didn't say that this is going to cost a school money, so donate, donate, donate to books and education and all of that, and that would be great. But we're going to do, there's some great districts that I found that have done this process through a very, very transparent process, where they've actually created URLs just for this, where they put up information. So then every single one of our stakeholders has the ability at any time to go online and, and read about the process and how we're doing that. And I'm going to do my best to try to do that same thing for this district. So, thank you. That's all I want to say.
I would like a motion to go a short time past 10 o'clock because we've got, I do want to hear the report on some of these maintenance projects that we have, but I, I'm sure our superintendent will keep this relatively brief.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay.
One final comment, please.
Vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, abstain, thank you, Michelle.
My comment to you, Mr. Chair, to Rhonda is, if you want to go through with the, and it seems like a majority of the board, with the two that she has, and after both do their presentations, if we don't feel what we was, was looking for is there, then invite MASC on another date. So I'm fine with that, too.
Well, MASC.
I mean, NESDEC, sorry.
Yeah, I think it's fine for me to give them a call. I'm pretty sure it's going to be very difficult at this late hour, but, but I don't think it hurts to.
Well, I don't want anybody else yelling at you.
Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Barry?
Great job. All right, so we've already talked about the roof project being completed, and if you recall a town meeting, we thought that this might cost us $110,000. It came in at approximately $64,000. We had to pay $5,000 because of the snowstorm and shoveling off the roof so that we could continue the project and get it done. And there was a construction management company that had oversight on site for five. So the total cost us $74,500, and well less than what the original cost. Mr. Palladino told me he is very satisfied with the work done, that they, it was a very professional job done. It is now watertight, and there are two small things, one being getting the, the company sarnafill that the roofing material came from comes and inspects before they give us our 20-year warranty.
Unfortunately, I have to ask you this question. This represents what percentage of the high school roof?
The remaining part of the high school roof to do total is $1,200,000. However, Mr. Palladino is going to be looking at the SOI, Statement of Interest, for projects such as roofing projects where the state will pick up 60% of that cost if money can be raised.
Yes, that still leaves $500,000 or so on the part of the, yes, got it. Thank you, continue.
Okay, the sec, well, Mike had a.
I'm sorry. I'll catch you offline with them.
Okay, okay. Second part was at the decas, we had mentioned that we had a, a failure of the freezer and walk-in. Both of those, the compressor has been changed, they have been rebuilt from the inside, so there's new insulation material put inside, new doors were delivered, and we now have a freezer that holds the temperature without running our water all the time because the old compressor was a water-type compressor with a water kept running. Our water bill should go down. And the third one is that we found that we had a underground tank at the high school that had 2,000, well, its capacity was 2,000 gallons of fuel oil. That now has been removed because the EPA told us it was going to fail and we had to. And we have an above-ground one with a fence around it. Everything has been done minus putting the concrete slab over where the old one was, but the dirt has been filled in, the sludge and the remainder has been taken away. So all three maintenance projects have been completed.
That's great news. And that last one, we, we dodged a bullet. If we found it already leaking, it would have been far, far more expensive, so, well done. Any questions on the maintenance projects? Ken?
I heard some questions from people in the school, and maybe this is to the superintendent or Mr. Palladino, that they were trying to raise some funds to, to do the, the floor in the gymnasium, and I didn't know if that was due to any damage from the water or just a preference. And I mean, do, do the floor not, putting down a new floor, but whether it's stripping and, and buffing the, the floor for a cost of about $800. I know other groups were approached about donating to that, so I'd like to find out a little more about that, if anyone has an answer.
I have no knowledge of that, but we'll be happy to find the answer and get back to you at that, the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other business that the committee would like to bring up? Thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.